All right, good morning, everyone. We're going to call to order this budget study session here on the morning of May 7th. Welcome, good to see everybody. Tony, let's call the roll.
Kameh, Campos, Salas, Cohen, Ortiz.
President.
Lokehe.
Here.
Dwan.
Here.
Candellis.
Here.
Casey.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Just want to quickly kick off by sincerely thanking city staff for all of the work that goes into putting together the budget. I don't think any of us, myself included, really fully grasp how hard this team works. So Jim, Bonnie, thank you, to you and the entire team for how much you guys do to make sure we are managing our dollars as effectively as we possibly can, helping the council make really good decisions, and just, you guys just do a phenomenal job. I also think we're very lucky to have a city manager who used to be the, our budget director. She's always coming up with creative solutions. And I want to thank Jennifer and Lee and everybody as well. It's just been great to work closely on the budget process, and you guys give me a lot of confidence, even when we come in facing a projected deficit, that we'll find a way to close that deficit without unduly burdening our workforce or our community. And I think you all have helped us be creative and navigate this really well. So we are heading into the study session process. This is an opportunity for the council to hear a lot of analysis and detail from our city manager and her team and her budget office, and really understand how the administration is responding to the needs of the city, to the March budget message, and where they are heading with, I know we have a lot of new council members going through this for the first time, where they are heading with the next fiscal year budget. And it's the perfect opportunity for us, it is a study session, to ask questions, learn, and just make sure we all have a good sense of the trade-offs that are being made, and how we're using our limited tax dollars to drive maximum impact, particularly within our five focus areas. So again, I want to thank Jennifer and the whole team. I'll turn it over to our city manager to say a little more.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and good morning to you all. Today, we are proud to deliver the 2526 proposed operating budget, which I believe is a very fiscally responsible and balanced budget that meets the important objectives of the city council, while also structurally aligning the general fund with minimal community or employee impacts. This budget follows the direction provided by the mayor and city council with their approval of the mayor's March budget message for fiscal year 2526, and considers other city council and administration priorities, recent community outreach and surveys, and the impacts of service reductions to the community. While the 2526 shortfall of $35.6 million in the general fund represents a relatively modest portion of the general fund base budget at 3%, decisive action is needed now to ensure a structurally aligned balanced budget, given the additional $52.9 million shortfall anticipated the following year, and recent actions by the federal government that are contributing to economic and funding uncertainty. The city must also make a select number of new investments to address the city council's most urgent priorities and address key areas of organizational risk. Keeping these considerations in mind, the proposed budget follows city council direction to focus on targeted strategic spending, while fully resolving the shortfall in 2526, and cutting in half the additional shortfall forecasted for 2627, reducing it from approximately $53 million to $26 million the following year. It is important to note that with the position eliminations necessary to address the shortfall, less than 15 employees will be impacted from actions in this proposed operating budget, and there will be no layoffs for employees who have rights to other positions. Throughout the study sessions today, tomorrow, and next week, which will cover not only the proposed operating budget, but the proposed capital budget and capital improvement program, and proposed fees and charges, I encourage you to ask questions of department staff to better understand the various components of the budget documents, including existing service levels, new or expanded initiatives, cost and service reductions, as well as performance measures. I'm very grateful for the hard work of all of our departments and the budget office to produce such comprehensive budget documents. I do want all the budget office staff to stand, to just get it recognized by the city council. So if you all, you've got, you're kind of spread out here, could you please stand, and let's give you all a round of applause? You guys over here, too. Jim, and Selena, and all you guys. They are really an absolute phenomenal team, and I know how hard they work personally, given my 26 years working on budgets over my career in the actual budget office. But thank you all to the budget team, you're fabulous. With that, I will turn it over to our budget director, Jim Shannon, who we're very, very lucky to have leading our budget office, to get us started with an overview of the proposed operating budget. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you very much, Jennifer, Mayor, city council members. Nothing the budget office loves more than being the center of attention, so I'm sure you guys all enjoyed that. Yeah, so again, I'm very, very proud of all the work that we've done here to get us to this, to this point. I'm going to spend some time just doing a high-level overview of the proposed budget. There's a lot of detail, obviously, in the documents, so we won't be going through all of that for my presentation, but we will be getting into that with the CSA portions that are going to continue thereafter. I'll also provide, well, a lot of it will also be on the focus of the general fund, what I'll be talking about, but we'll also provide you with some highlights regarding key actions and other city funds that are also recommended in 2526, and those details about those proposals are also in the budget book, and will be talked about in our budget study session. So here is our agenda for the next just few minutes. I'm going to, again, go through the proposed budget overview, talk, really spend a lot of the time talking through what the budget balancing strategy was to get to this, to this point, a little bit in the next steps for the course of the week, and then the budget process, and then I'm going to turn it over to our deputy director in OEDCA, Blagie Solalich, to talk through some economic outlook pieces before we turn it back over to questions. And I want to just remind folks of where we started from, and where our starting point was for the proposed budget. This is our revised five-year general fund forecast. Our starting point is the shortfall of $35.6 million in the, in the general fund. That's revised from that $45.7 million that was published at the end of February, based on a little bit of good news on the revenue side, as well as a few minor adjustments. We always spend time, after the forecast is released, we spend a lot of time evaluating what the most recent information is, making, making corrections, so we can give you a proposed budget that is accurate as possible. So that was revised downward there to $35.6 million. But we still have our second-year shortfall, which would be an additional $52.9 million. So you can see, over a two-year period, that's about almost an $89 million cumulative shortfall. And over the five-year period, you know, our forecast projects a cumulative shortfall of $87 million. So that's where we are working toward as part of this budget process, and why we really wanted to make sure we had a multi-year strategy, because we knew, even if we got better news for the current year, we still have some problems for the following year. So we wanted to make sure we thought about that, and we got direction in that as part of the March budget message. So we're bringing forward you a proposed budget today that brings all of our funds into balance, our general, special, and capital funds. We were fully resolved that general fund shortfall. We have additional actions that would cut the second-year shortfall in half. We feel that's a very important step to take. We also made sure we made space for the investment priorities that were identified in the council-approved March budget message, which you can see there, which are our focus areas, as well as making sure that we were shoring up sort of key areas of ongoing core service work and other community services, strategic support, and deferred infrastructure areas. And all in total, our budget positions grew by a total of five. So we had, we went from just $6,994 to just one below $7,000. Those were balanced on a number of reductions, as well as additions. A lot of those additions are in some special funds, a lot of them actually are continuation of some temporary staffing in the housing department to continue work already in progress. So from a very high-level perspective, this is what the city's budget looks like. So we're at $5.6 billion now, across all of our funds. This will, this will go, as we get into our adopted budget process, and we carry over funds that need to be rebudgeted in the next fiscal year to continue projects already in progress, that's, will probably go up. So we'll probably be pretty close to the $6 billion budget for the adopted budget that we had in '24, '25. But as you can see, it's, it's, we spent a lot of time talking about the general fund, but it's only about 25% of the proposed budget, 26% here. The majority of it are in our special funds for, to operate our enterprise, our enterprise operations, like the airports, and the energy departments, and the water and sewer treatments. Also, our housing funds are in there. So there's a lot of funding that is restricted for specific use that are identified in the special funds to facilitate our operating budget. Similarly, on the capital fund side, which will have a separate study session on Monday to go through the capital budget, those are generally restricted funds to help rehabilitate our built environment of public infrastructure. But across all those 145 funds, that's how they all shake out. When we look at the operating budget from a CSA perspective, as our budget is presented at a department level, but we also sort of roll things up into our city service areas, this shows a breakdown of all of the operating budget that is excluding fund balance transfers and reserves, and the capital project expenditures, how that is shaken out. So our largest single CSA there is our environmental and utility services, which is our, largest piece of that is our energy department for the procurement of electricity, as well as all of our underground infrastructure. Then we've got our public safety, which are our police and fire departments, and then to kind of split there between transportation, aviation, and neighborhood services with strategic support. That looks a little bit larger, because we also include a lot of our benefit funds in there, so that looks like it's a little bit beefed up, higher than it actually is. But this is just a nice representation of the broad CSA, is how they are budgeted across the organization. If we're just looking at some funds, this is a nice display of the different types of funds. Even though the general fund is only 25% of the budget, it is our single biggest fund, and you can see that they're represented, when you just look at what's being budgeted on the expenditure side, that's about $1.44 billion, followed then by our storm sewer water and wastewater funds, the energy department, airport, and so on and so forth, all down the line. So this is just a little bit of representation of the different types of funds that compose the operating budget. Now, looking at the general fund specifically, here's a breakdown of our general fund revenues. We have a number of general fund revenue categories, and we spent some time talking about this in our study session, so we won't go into this too, in too much detail, but I just want to point out a few things, is that our largest revenues in the general fund are our sales tax and our property tax. And I just want to get my notes, because I think that is about 52% of the general fund revenues. So how sales tax does and how property tax does really impacts the, the general fund budget. It's almost enough to pay for police and fire. So police and fire is, is a little bit more than what we get for property and sales, and sales tax. So all the rest of the revenues essentially pays for everything else that, that we, that we do in the city. So that's an interesting way to think about that. Again, we've talked about in the forecast, property tax has been performing pretty well still, even though there is some uncertainty, especially on the commercial side. The valuations have still been, been holding, and we still expect that to go up, although probably a little bit slower than it has been in the past. Sales tax, as we've talked about, we're still experiencing anticipated shortfall for the end of the current fiscal year. We do expect some slow growth, uh, growth into '25, '26, but we do expect that to be modest and from a lower starting point. And, you know, the, I'll talk about this a little bit later, but the economy is certainly changing, and something we need to keep in mind as we go through the next fiscal year. On the expenditure side, this is a representation of the different types of expenditures. It's not a surprise that the city delivers services, so we need to pay people to deliver those services. That's about 70% of the general fund budget. Then we've got our non-personal equipment. These are things like supplies and materials, contractual services, consultant services, that makes up a much smaller portion. A citywide is generally our multi-departmental types of expenditures, so think of San Jose Best, think of our workers' compensation claims. Those, a lot of our larger, larger grants are rolled up into the citywide, just a little bit for general fund capital contributions. There are some transfers to support some other, other, other funds. We do have a little bit of earmarked reserves, and our contingency reserve is rolled up into the, the green slice, and then our encumbrance reserve, which is funds that are encumbered for work that's already in progress. When you break that out by department, this shows sort of by department where the money is budgeted, and then you see that dividing line at the bottom, those are non-departmental expenditures, our citywide, our capital contributions, transfers to other funds, and the reserves. This just gives a little bit of a pictorial representation about the level of investment for each type of department within the city, in the general fund. So now, let's talk a little bit about the budget balancing strategy. So we had, you know, a shortfall of $35.6 million. We also wanted to take a big chunk out of the $53 million additional shortfall in the following year, and while also making sure that we made space for those council most urgent priorities. And so the, the key strategies here are outlined above. First, you know, this budget will look very different if we didn't have the direction to reallocate funding for Measure, Measure E to support homeless sheltering and supportive services. So that's $39.2 million that shifted out of the general fund into the real property transfer tax fund, as, as, as part of the proposed budget. So that's $39.2 million in '25, '26, increases to $42.8, because we do assume the revenue for Measure E does go up in the following year. We do have some identification of new, new revenue, 12.5 million in, in '25, '26, $9 million ongoing. Part of that is about $5 million for a delayed implementation of some regulatory changes that would negatively impact the cardroom business tax. We think those regulatory changes will still be in effect in '26, '27, but we don't think they'll hit in '25, '26. So there's a little bit of one-time revenue there that, that we're able to spend from about $5 million. First responder fee for the fire department, $2 million, and, starting in January of, of '26, and then $4 million ongoing. A business tax amnesty program by the finance department for a couple of years to generate sort of a net $1.5 million in general fund improvement. We do, though, have some cost and service reductions, that we'll get into a little bit more later, but $11.7 million in '25, '26, about $15 million ongoing. We are recommending the deferral of Fire Station 32. So Fire Station 32 will still come online in, in spring. It was originally conceived of as a one-company station. When we got into the design, it made sense to have that be a two-company station, an engine and a truck. We are recommending deferral of the activation of the truck company and only deploying the engine company, which will generate some, some savings that we can take advantage of in the general fund. We also do have some delays in getting the, the truck to be arrived. So we've already budgeted for the truck, so we have the money in place, the truck is ordered, but, but there is also a backlog on the, the trucks coming online. We're also recommending to continue to open the police training center, also funded by Measure, by Measure T, as is Fire Station 30, 32. But also, the forecast had assumed that the South San Jose Police Substation, once the training staff was moved from the substation to the, the training center, then the substation will be activated as a true substation in South San Jose. We are recommending to defer the subsequent activation of the substation until, as part of, reevaluate as part of a future budget, budget process. It also is reflective of the fact that we do have a number of sort of sworn vacancies in the police department, and so our number of sworn positions to fully fill out a substation is a little bit limited at the moment. And we are recommending some strategic use of some limited reserve funding for some one-time uses. We've about $7 million of that budget stabilization reserve, which we'll talk a little bit more later. And we also have $11.5 million of our community economic recovery reserve. This is funding we had been setting aside for potential use related to some trailing issues related with the pandemic. We no longer need to use it for that, and so now we can put it on the table, although we do want to use $10 million of that to shore up potential non-reimbursements from FEMA related to reimbursements we think we're owed from FEMA, but we might not get for various reasons. So, but we do have that as a one-time source. Come on there. So when you look at our overall, big-picture general fund balancing strategy, so we have a shortfall of $35.6 million, all of that is an ongoing shortfall. We've got $35 million of change in sources, but only $9 million of that is an on, is an on, ongoing adjustment. We've got a number of change in uses that I'll talk through in a moment to get us fully balanced, and so we've, we've fully resolved that ongoing shortfall. If we had not reserved, if we have not solved that ongoing shortfall, let's say we only solved $25.6 million on an ongoing basis, and we used $10 million to solve it on a one-time basis. That $10 million of unsolved ongoing shortfall would then be added to the next year, so that 52.9 would then be 62.9 million, right? So we want to make sure we are resolving all of that general fund shortfall in '25, '26. Oops, that's a little bit too much. On the use side, here is the, this is also shown in the city manager's transmittal message, but just want to highlight a few rows here for our, our use of funds. The largest one, and we really wanted, this is really emblematic of our two-year strategy approach here, so we have $27 million of funds unspent on an ongoing basis, and we're putting into our '26, '27 future deficit reserve. This is the action that allows us to cut the second-year shortfall in half. So we've got money, ongoing money set aside next year to resolve that following year shortfall. We do have a number of unmet deferred technology maintenance needs. We've had to replace the generators over at the 911 call center. We've got to replace the mobile data computers, and the, the police cars. We have a number of other one-time needs that are going to show up in any, any given year. Here you see that $10 million transfer to the emergency reserve fund for our FEMA non-reimbursable expenses. We, we do feel optimistic that we're going to get a decent amount of that, but there, it's always tricky to get reimbursement from FEMA even in the best of times, and these probably aren't exactly the best of times, so we do need to make sure that we are reserving some funds for that. The service level enhancements are generally related to what the March budget message direction was, including some funding for the 2026 sporting events, the police department, neighborhood quality of life units, some SECO process improvements, real-time intelligence center technologies, pieces that are found throughout the, the budget document that we'll be talking through over the next few days, a number of earmarked reserves, including some funding for the police department's sworn backup reserve of $5, $5 million, our essential services reserve of $1.25 million, and a reserve for oversized lived-in vehicle enforcement of about $1 million that will be coming forward as part of a manager's budget addendum to liquidate later in the process. So those are just a few highlights, there's a few more in there. Then we do have a number of services that are previously funded on a one-time basis that we're recommending to continue, of which $2.5 million would be ongoing, a number of grants, reimbursements that we want to recognize here that are offset by revenue, the new infrastructure, equipment, operations, and maintenance. So these are fundings really to operate the police training center and the Fire Station 32, which are new Measure, Measure T facilities that had come, come online. We had reserved most of, we had reserved all of that cost as part of the forecast, and so dropping back down to the last line here, where you see use of reserves. So we had already reserved that funding in, in the forecast. Our normal process then is to come forward in the proposed budget, and then liquidate the reserve to allocate those funds to the specific departments. Where we're generating some savings here is because we are fully liquidating the reserves, but only appropriating some of those costs to the departments, again, because we are deferring the activation of 32, and we're deferring the substation opening. So you see a little bit of, of net difference there between the negative reduction in the reserves and the positive amounts for the infrastructure equipment line item. Then you see our reallocation of Measure E funds to the real property transfer tax fund, so those are cost shifted out of the general fund and going to the other fund, and then those are cost reductions and service delivery efficiencies and fund shifts of $11.7 and $15 million. And that's sort of the very high level of the different categories we have to balance in the general fund. Talking a little bit more specifically about a few items, so in looking at Measure, Measure E, so this is the, the recommended use of the Measure E funds for '25, '26, and on an ongoing basis. And so we've got $55 million projected for '25, '26, and Measure E, $60 million in '26, '27. 5% of that would be still allocated for program administration. The remaining 95, or the, the remaining amount would be split in accordance with the direction. So still preserving the, the 10% for homeless prevention. And then the policy recommended change would be to increase the, the baseline of 15% to make it a sliding scale to go to 15% to 90, 90% for the use of homeless sheltering and supportive services. So we do have the full 90% is recommended here, and we just kind of split that out between what we had in the base budget, which is that original 15%, and then the reallocated 75% that was previously slated for new affordable housing work. So we have funding for the interim housing port, portfolio of $25 million in '25, '26, increasing to $39.25 million the following year. Our outreach sanitation, other supportive services provided by the housing department, primarily focused along the waterways, that would be funded in Measure E on, on ongoing basis. And for '25, '26, sort of a one-year funding shift, shift some of the beautify San Jose encampment management services. These are the services that are provided, services like trash and sanitation and waste pickup at, at the encampments. None of the Measure E funding would be used for any abatement work, this is just services provided by BSJ to the, the different encampments. That would be shifted on a one-time basis, as would some general fund resources we have for homeless rapid rehousing, that would also be shifted on a one-time basis. But on an ongoing basis, really, that would, the bulk would be for the interim housing portfolio and for outreach work. There are still plans to, and Eric will talk a little bit more about this when we get to the CED CSA presentation, but there are some, still work to make sure that affordable housing is important, and we want to make sure we, we find as much resources as we can to continue that, that work. So there will be notice of funding availability from prior year Measure E and other housing fund allocations, estimated at approximately $60, $60 million. So that'll provide a, a new bump for some affordable housing work. And then a mixture of new combinations of, of innovative measures, including a housing bond, refinancing some key city assets, and some master leasing financing strategies that the housing department will be looking forward, which combined would yield approximately $100 million to be able to unlock in the future year for affordable housing work. And we get into the reduction side, so even with the Measure E reallocation, we do need to do some reduction of some cost and services. And we wanted to be very strategic about how we thought, thought through that. Again, as, as Jennifer had mentioned, the mayor had touched on, we work really hard to try to limit the impact to the community, and to our employees, and to not only just the community abroad, but the different populations about whom we serve, because a lot of what the city does is serve our most vulnerable communities. And so when we're doing reductions, you know, it's very likely that we're going to impact the vulnerable communities, so we need to be thoughtful about how we go through that, through that process. But first, we want to make sure that we're identifying, you know, non-staff-related issues, non-personal equipment savings that don't really result in any meaningful reductions in services. So we think that's about, well, that is, $1 million in the, in the proposed budget. We'll have an MBA coming forward to sort of dive into that deeper, to give up some more context to that, and, and we're still kind of finishing up, up our scrub. So there'll be more information coming up about that a little later. We are looking also for back-of-house reductions in our strategic support departments. These are important, because we want to make sure we're minimizing our community service departments, but small reductions here can have an outsized impact, so we need to be careful about how we're doing that. So we try to target reductions that would minimize disruptions, while still preserving our back-of-house infrastructure to deliver services, and so that's at about $4, $4 million. And then we talked a little bit before, but the ongoing cost of the police and fire departments is 55% of the general fund on, ongoing budget. So if we really don't have cost reductions in police and fire that don't impact public safety, or don't decrease public safety, then the impacts on the rest of the departments is that much harder to be able to resolve the, the general fund. So we really looked closely in police and fire, worked really, really hard to figure, okay, well, what other cost reductions, or what other revenue items could we put forward that would reduce the burden on the general fund without compromising public, public safety? And so we do have a number of those we talked about earlier, and we do have a number of other ones that are in the proposed budget. But we're still going to get to some community services, and, and, and so we have to think really critically about how we're approaching those reductions to community services. We are really trying to make sure that we are preserving to the extent that we, that, that we can, the city's core services, because we know that what's, the staff-level provided services are, some are often targeted to those most vulnerable communities. And so we're really intentional about evaluating the budget reductions, we're using data to conform, you know, community usage, the impacts, making sure that if they're going to have consequences, they're not unintentional. Like, we know what the consequences are to the best of our ability. It doesn't mean there's not going to be impacts, but we go into that with our eyes wide, wide open. We're looking at services that maybe have lower participation levels, programs that have shrunk in recent years, and/or services where alternative providers are identified, or that just really not in our real house, and maybe that's where it makes sense to scale back, so we can preserve what we're really good at. We, we do not have, we do not have any cuts to library hours in here, no parts maintenance, pure staff-led community center and recreational programming work, aquatics, scholarships, or senior nutrition. So we're able to preserve sort of that core service delivery work, but we do have reductions elsewhere, as we'll talk through over the next week. And we have some reductions that don't take effect until '26, '27. This means that it gives time, some time for those impacted service providers and community members to identify some alternative strategies. It also allows time for those impacted employees to transition into new assignment to avoid potential layoffs. So those were some of the deliberate thoughts we had as we engaged in the budget reduction process this year. And I'm not going to spend any time here, this is really just more for reference. So these are slides indicating the different budget proposals that are included in the proposed budget. This gives the title and the section in the budget document where they are listed. So I'm just going to, this is just for your future reference, it's also in the city manager's transmittal message, and it's in the CSA section, so I just have this in here for your future reference, but I'm just going to go ahead and skip through these, because we have them all for CED, we have them for EUS, neighborhood services, public safety, transportation and aviation. I would love to talk about them, but I'm sure, I'm sure you want to move on. Strategic support. And here we have a note about our fees and charges adjustments that we will be talking about more specifically on our study session in Monday. about more specifically on our study session in Monday. Very limited increases for our utility programs, so no change for storm sewer, a 4% for sanitary sewer, 2% for single-family and multifamily recycle plus rates, and about a 3% revenue increase for our Muni water system rate. So again, really trying to mitigate the impact on our community, not just on the general fund side, but also to our rate payers as well. And we do have the 10% recommended increase to maintain cost recovery levels for fire, planning and public works development fee programs, but we do not need a rate increase for the building development program. But as proud as we are of the proposed budget and as many good things are in there, there are some things that are not in there that we just need to be aware of, that as we go through the remainder of this fiscal year and into the future fiscal years, is that, you know, we only, we only have a few investments for deferred capital, but there's really hundreds of millions of dollars of unfunded capital projects, especially at city facilities, including this, this building that, that are, you know, going to be, continue to be a challenge, and we're going to have to address in the coming years. So we just want to have that out there. We do have some limited, very targeted capital investments, that line item I showed, which is $20 million for unmet deferred infrastructure, that's a drop in the bucket. So they're very important, so we've funded the most critical things that have to like get done now, but we're going to need to come forward with strategies to be able to get at a bigger chunk of that in future fiscal years. That also extends to our community facilities like our parks and libraries. We do have some potential revenue loss that's out there, so, although we did get some good news, is one of the reasons why our shortfall went down, is because we got some good news on our educational revenue augmentation fund allocation from property tax. And it's a sort of a double-edged sword, so we, the county told us that we were going to get more revenue, that's primarily because we have lower enrollment in our local school system. So the funding gets reallocated to the local jurisdiction sooner. But there is a dispute with the state comptroller's office about how Bay Area counties do that allocation, and so we know that some of that revenue is at, at risk, both on an ongoing and a potential clawback basis. We do have about $30 million of revenue that we think FEMA owes us, that we might not get all of that money back for various reasons. And so we are recommending, again, to have about, move $10 million into a reserve or the emergency reserve fund to bring our total buffer for FEMA to 13 million, but we're going to have to keep an eye on that, because if that doesn't get paid, paid back, that is ultimately a general fund hit. The pullback in federal funding, that is sort of changing day by day, and we're going to keep monitoring that, and when we have actual information, we're going to bring that forward. But I imagine there'll be some adjustments to the budget going forward to deal with impacts of federal funding, as well as the unfolding economic impacts related to, you know, the various tariff maneuvers or other, other aspects just of the overall local and broader economy. Should the retirement systems not meet their rate, assumed rate of return for the current fiscal year, which is probably likely, but you, you know, I always, I can be optimistic here, that would impact the contributions for 2627. And so there's no estimate for what that is, but that's going to be something that we're going to, is probably going to impact what that shortfall looks like in 2627. So those are just some things we want council to be aware of. And our ability to reserve to blunt some of those aspects is very limited. So this is a slide just showing our general purpose reserves, which is our budget stabilization, our workers' comp catastrophic loss reserve, and our contingency reserve. The sum of these by council policy should be 10, 10% of general fund operating expenditures. Right now, they're at 6.6%. By the time we get to the adopted budget, they'll probably be somewhere around 5, 5%. We are planning to use $7 million of the budget stabilization reserve as part of the proposed budget. We might be using up to 20 million as part of the 2425 year-end process, just to deal with the sales tax shortfall and how it impacts our ongoing beginning fund balance estimates. So not, you know, only having $26 million of our most flexible reserve going into these uncertain times, you know, just makes, reminds us how cautious we need and thoughtful we need to be as we kind of go through the remainder of this budget process and into next fiscal year. And so for the remainder of the week or so, so we've got the overview, which we're wrapping up, we'll have then followed by the community and economic development CSA. Tomorrow, we'll get into transportation, aviation, and EUS. Monday will be a big day. We'll, we'll do neighborhood services, which will also include discussion on lived-in vehicles, the public safety conversation, which will also include the responsibilities of shelter conversation, strategic support and appointees, which will also have a conversation on pay-for-performance, and city council referral recommendations about the work we'll do on a moving forward basis. And we have our fees and charges report and our capital program overview. That's a big day, so if we do need more time, we do have that reserved for Wednesday and Thursday morning, should we need it. And the rest of the steps for review, input, and approval are laid out here. So we've got a number of town halls that the mayor's office is scheduling, we've got our public hearings coming up. Once all that input is factored in to the mayor's June budget message, which was released at the beginning of June, and is voted on by council along with the measure E spending allocations, the second meeting in June, until we finally have our formal adoption on June 17th. And so before I turn it over to Blaggett, again, I just want to extend the thanks to my awesome, awesome senior leadership team who supports me in a tremendous amount of ways that's hard to really speak about. And my team, who I haven't actually seen in like the last two weeks, so I've just been so crazy, but what you guys do is really incredible, I really appreciate that. And then there's a lot of, you know, hard work at the department level, at the staff level, to the director level, in the departments, you know, a lot of not easy conversations in, with the, with the departments, but they're always, you know, from a place of good, good, good faith, thoughtfulness, and I really appreciate all those conversations. So thank you all for that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Blaggett before we open it up for questions.
Actually, Jim, I do want to keep pushing ahead into economic development, is that right? Is that where we're going next, or are we still on overview?
We're still on.
Still within overview?
Yes.
Part of overview, great. Let's do that, I'm going to then do, we'll do brief questions, and then we do need to get, we'll do longer questions after the next section. But yeah, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Good morning, mayor and council members. Blagis Lalich, the deputy director in the Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs, and I'm pleased to be here this morning to provide you with some overall economic context ahead of the budget study sessions that you'll be having over the next four to five days. Very briefly, here are the areas I'm going to cover in this morning's presentation. So first, we'll take a look at what's going on in the national economy, and then move to California's economic landscape, and then to our local San Jose landscape, and end up with a few thoughts about the road ahead. So first, let's start with a few insights as to what's happening with the macro economy. Between April of '24 and April of '25, the US economy experienced a slowdown, with GDP contracting in Q1 of 2025 by 0.3% and consumer confidence declining. Inflation rates have eased, and the Federal Reserve has maintained steady interest rates. The stock market showed resilience, recovering significant losses in April around the announcement of federal policies by early May of '25. Retail sales saw significant growth. The introduction of extensive tariffs by the current federal administration has contributed to economic instability. These tariffs have already and are anticipated to lead to increased costs for consumers and businesses, prompting concerns about inflation and potential recession. Economists warn that such trade policies could result in a GDP contraction of up to 1.1% in 2025. As a result of the factors described on the previous slide, on a national level, we are looking at the prevailing sentiment that despite some positive indicators, like low unemployment, the public remains concerned about the economy's direction. This is where we get the term vibe session, which is a term I hadn't heard of before. I started doing a little bit of research here, but it kind of sounds cool. So the term vibe session has been used to describe the current disconnect between economic indicators and public perception. Okay, so moving on to what's going on with our state. Our state with various economic drivers that you see on this slide above. Overall, California's economy, most recently named the fourth largest economy in the world, right above Japan and India, is navigating a complex landscape, shaped by one persistent housing unaffordability, where we've got a median home price more than double the national average, two, high cost of living, where one in three households struggle to meet basic living expenses, three, tech sector uncertainty, has experienced employment reductions as of late at some of its most recognizable companies such as Meta, Google, and Intel, four, shifting trade policies that have led the state's ports to see reduced container volumes and ripple effects across related industries, five, labor market dynamics, which include an unemployment rate of over 5%, the fourth highest in the nation, and six, growing climate risks with more frequent and severe climate-related events and stricter climate change policies. Okay, so now we're going to turn to our local economy, and this is two years kind of post the pandemic. So with respect to real estate, the city's development pipeline includes approved projects with almost 3 million square feet of industrial development, almost 2,000 hotel rooms, approximately 23,000 housing units, and over 28 million square feet of commercial space. There's optimism around experiencing sustained growth across R&amp;D and industrial sectors, while the commercial office development continues to face a significant degree of uncertainty due to high vacancy rates and evolving work models. I would say that access to capital is one of the most significant hurdles with our small business community. A notable portion of the population may face challenges accessing traditional banking services. Although inflation has moderated substantially over the last two years, and the regional median salary grew by 4.5% to over 168,000 in 2024, these gains were overshadowed by San Jose's high cost of living, which exceeds the national average by 76%, and housing costs, which exceed the national average by 225%. San Jose has low unemployment at 4.1%, but lots of inequity within the sector of that economy. Also, Silicon Valley and San Jose's innovation economy relies on the easy flow of labor that is becoming more and more constrained with the policies at the federal government level. 2% of all the city's businesses hold close to 65% of its jobs. 11 of the city's 20th-largest employers are in tech, and others are in government, education, and health and well-being sectors. As one of the city's primary sources of revenue at 20%, I have a separate slide a little bit later on in the presentation that will talk about sales tax. Cost of doing business is a mixed bag for most businesses. Dynamic, high-cost environment with access to a skilled workforce is where we are, and at the same time, concerns around the perception of crime, blight, and quality of life issues. This is what we hear most often about on our biz walks. We also often hear about permit timelines and costs, costs being barriers, as well as the propensity for lawsuits and other regulation that they're facing. And lastly, on the supply chain, supply chain shortages due to tariffs and other federal policies may increasingly affect small business. This is a top concern for many, and there's significant trickle-down effect around uncertainty at the national level. So this is a slide that we have all become all too familiar with over the past probably three years, Castle's Back-to-Work Tracker. The tracker shows some increase in office occupancy, but very slowly, with San Jose still in the bottom portion of the pack. The ten-city average weekly occupancy on return to office is 53.4%, and San Jose is in the number six slot at 51.1%. It's kind of a hard chart to read, but you can see the red arrow there is, is the San Jose metro. Business travel has provided a significant boost to the SJ economy in the past, and while we know that business travel is not back to pre-pandemic levels, passenger counts since 2021 have risen significantly at SJC. It's likely that passenger traffic will be down this year compared to last year. We already know of routes that are being canceled or have less frequency. Many airports are starting to feel the impact of recent economic activities. And remember that any tariffs will impact airline cargo, which helps to make routes financially viable. The impacts of significantly lower passenger counts also weigh heavily on our local hospitality industry and small business sector. So hotel occupancy, it continues to be below pre-pandemic levels in the city's just over 11,000 hotel rooms. Occupancy has hovered around 67%, not yet recovered from where it was at 74% at the onset of the pandemic. The average daily rate at San Jose hotels remains low at $170 per day as of March 2025, which is down from where it was at $199 in February of 2020. So both of these points are another indication of why hotel/hospitality and entertainment workers are still struggling in our local economy. Also, low hotel utilization means low transit occupancy tax generation, and as a result, decreased support to our arts community. So next, I'm going to talk about a few of the city budget drivers. As Jim mentioned before, sales tax is, is the second biggest driver of our, our revenue to the general fund. So in 2024 calendar year, income received from local sales tax declined by 1.2% compared to the same period in 2023. And this is largely apparent in the transportation line on the graph, which is the black one. And in that, we experienced a decline in new electric vehicle auto sales and lower gas prices. Overall, business-to-business sales tax remained high and is a positive indicator of underlying, of the underlying strength of the city's economy. Business contributes about 30% of local sales tax in San Jose, which is much higher than in many other jurisdictions in California, where typically that ranges from 6% to 10%. In the past year, the top 100 sales tax generators continue to account for an increasing percentage of all sales tax, now exceeding 52% of all sales tax received by the city. Next, we've got some information around commercial real estate development, investment, and kind of what's going on with housing. So this chart shows availability rates for office, flex space, retail, and industrial. The availability rate takes into account sublease space, new projects coming online, and occupied spaces where leases are not being renewed. Not unlike our neighboring cities, San Jose continues to see sluggish, sluggish office leasing market with 18% availability. However, it's important to realize that the office market is our smallest commercial segment, primarily found downtown and at the airport. And actually, the airport is one of two Silicon Valley submarkets that had the largest volume of commercial space absorption in 2024. Flex and industrial space dominates our building base in San Jose. North San Jose, Edenvale, Monterey Road, employees at these companies cannot typically work from home, and many of these companies are growing. This slide shows you a few of the companies that have relocated, expanded, or significantly invested in San Jose recently, from global names like Adobe, Cisco, and Nvidia to emerging players in AI, robotics, semiconductors, and clean energy. The diversity of our business ecosystem is also impressive. One area of growth for us is in the medical slash healthcare industries. Significant projects underway in that field include two six-story medical buildings at about 300,000 square feet and a new Kaiser Permanente outpatient facility in South San Jose at over, at almost 700,000 square feet. This slide demonstrates how commercial real estate property sales have seen a deep decline, really fallen off a cliff, since 2122, when commercial sales resulted in a high of about $90 million in transfer tax revenue. The yellow bar on the graph is the year-to-date number for 2025 of approximately 600,000. So if we keep this pace for the remainder of the calendar year, we'll presumably outpace the revenue that was generated in 2024. We'll just have to see, there's, we don't have that crystal ball. We are seeing a trend, though, of the sale of distressed properties, which is both good news and bad news. Bad news to the degree that these buildings are going for lower sale prices and being reassessed at lower property tax values, therefore reducing the amount of revenue generated by the city and the county because of that lower value. But good news in the sense that presumably these properties are finding their way to owners that have more ability to do improvements and reinvest in the properties, ultimately increasing their values and returning increased revenue to the city. The city is optimistic about experiencing sustained growth across R&amp;D and industrial sectors, while commercial office development continues to face a significant degree of uncertainty. This slide illustrates the extent to which investors and businesses are willing to make an investment in San Jose. Unlike the previous slide, if we remain on pace with the 134,000 square feet of development that has been started this year over the rest of the year, we will not that has been started this year over the rest of the year, we will not surpass the 875,000 square feet of construction starts in 2024. Looking ahead, our ability to deliver on the power needs of future large load customers will be one of the keys to facilitating significant commercial development in key areas of our city. So I would be remiss, as an economic development staff person, if I didn't have this slide in my presentation this morning. So I think many of you have seen this slide before. Most of our neighboring cities, as you know, have employment lands that make up somewhere between 20% and 30% of their incorporated area. You can see from the pie chart above that San Jose has a much larger percentage, or sorry, a much lower percentage of employment land than that. We are only at about 14%. And more specifically, we have a lower percentage of industrial land compared to other surrounding cities. Just reinforcing the importance of maintaining our employment lands for the future economic vitality and sustainability of the city. So these next four slides are to give you a little bit of a snapshot of what's happening in the housing market. Here we have market rate apartment availability and asking rents for the city of San Jose. As far as apartment rents go, they really bottomed out at the end of 2020 and then have made a persistent rise to about 30 cents over above pre-pandemic levels. While this rent growth is positive from a development perspective, it's a little tough on the renter/consumer side of things of the equation, because renters may be in the lower-wage categories whose earnings don't stretch as far. The graph also shows us that apartment availability rates have remained below pre-pandemic levels. This slide has Q1 2025 figures for average residential sales values and shows that the market held steady, and recorded unit prices are being paid for both single-family, sorry, record unit prices are being paid for both single-family homes and condos. From an economic perspective, the strong property market is a result of a stable labor market and inbound migration, and also directly feeds into rising property tax for the city. Low unemployment means people have jobs, and there's confidence to spend money on things that generate sales tax and maybe even make big decisions like buying property. All of these components together fuel the local narrative. The next two slides show residential building permits pulled since 2019 for both affordable and market rate housing. Pulling a building permit means a developer, in essence, is ready to start construction. We witnessed a considerable jump in the number of affordable residential building permits in 2023 and 2024, and look forward to having those much-needed units come online. However, as confirmed by the fact that no affordable residential building permits have yet been pulled in 2025, financing this type of housing product remains challenging for a variety of reasons, including a complex funding stack and persistent high cost of construction and interest rates. Annual building permit issuance for market rate developments has fallen substantially since pre-pandemic times, with building permit issuance reduced by one-half and two-thirds respectively in the last two years. Q1 2025 only saw permit issuance for 30 units of market rate housing. We've seen construction costs grow pretty significantly over the last two years, with rents increasing, but not increasing enough to the level that allows market rate development to pencil. The city's recent passage of the multifamily growth incentive has caused a few key projects to move forward. However, the city's housing element target for market rate units is approximately 29,000 by 2031. So we are going to need many, many more building permits to be pulled. Okay. And last, but certainly not least, I want to talk just a little bit about employment and jobs in our city. So unlike recent years, employment levels and the unemployment rate in 2024 were relatively stable and remain so for the first quarter of this year. Nonetheless, a variety of vulnerabilities persist within the community, and recent policy actions at the national level have led to both business and consumer uncertainty. Between March 2024 and March 2025, 10,500 more residents of the San Jose MSA found employment, an increase of 1%. The preliminary March unemployment rate remains unchanged at 4.1% and still below "full employment" benchmark of 5%. Of the 42,000 people unemployed in Q1 2025, 11% identified as Black or African-American, 34% identified as Hispanic or Latino. Both of these percentages are disproportionately high based on the total population of Black/African-Americans at 2.9% and Hispanics/Latinos at 25% in Santa Clara County. During the same period, March 24 to March 25, our MSA lost a net of 6,000 jobs, half a percentage point, despite some gains led by 7,700 jobs in the healthcare and social assistance sector and 1,800 jobs in government, mostly in local government educational services. The gains were offset by year-over-year loss of 6,200 professional and business service jobs, 4,200 manufacturing jobs, 2,400 construction jobs, and 1,900 information jobs. Tech jobs, such as computer equipment manufacturing and semiconductor and other electronic component manufacturing, did remain unchanged in the MSA over last year at 40,000 jobs. The income inequality gap in Silicon Valley is growing twice as fast as the U.S., according to the 2025 Silicon Valley Index. The average income of the highest-earning 20% of Santa Clara County households is 1,947% of the average income of the lowest-earning 20%. The graphs on this slide are sampling of jobs by race and their corresponding median hourly earnings at the MSA level. Disparities in representation across high and low-paying occupations highlight structural inequities. Only 6% of workers in high-wage fields, such as computer and mathematical occupations, identify as Hispanic or Latino, and 2% as Black or African-American, whereas lower-paying occupations, such as food preparation and service jobs, have significantly higher shares of Hispanic, Latino, and Black/African-American workers at 36% and 5% respectively. So as we look ahead, here's some of what we're continuing to consider. There's an overarching theme of uncertainty that is trickling down from the national level to the local level, and that uncertainty will have a significant cascading economic impact on us here in California, the Bay Area, and in San Jose. It will be more difficult to facilitate inclusive prosperity as cuts to federal programs and funding roll out, as they've already rolled out. There were a few articles in today's paper, a few articles in Spotlight about national endowment for the arts funding that's already been cut back, and other federal funding that was not received as a result of an ask from our federal legislators. So job and revenue creation will be key to economic stability and sustainability. And part of that is responding to population changes and making sure that we retain people of "prime working age," which are folks 25 to 54, 80% of whom go to work, they generate the highest salaries, and they spend the most amount of money back into the economy. And so those folks will be really key. Experts say that when a city falls below 40% of this segment of the population in their city, it's trouble. San Jose is currently at 44%. That's probably too close to 40 for our liking. So just to conclude, to increase wealth and opportunity for all residents in the current climate, we must be open to thinking even more creatively and likely leaning into increased reliance on public and private partnerships. I realize that I've presented a lot of information this morning. I hope at least some of it will be helpful to you as you make your budgetary decisions for the next fiscal year over the next month or so. And I would just like to acknowledge, as Jim acknowledged his team, I'd like to acknowledge the folks that are both currently and were formerly on the OED staff that helped to create this presentation. It certainly does take a village, and I'm very appreciative of the village that we have on our team. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all. Really detailed presentation. We're going to keep questions for this section short, but we will quickly go around. I'm going to ask one and then hand it off to others, and then we'll jump into community and economic development and hopefully have a little more time to go into questions. I appreciate all the analysis. I think the economic context is important. Obviously, our public budgets are downstream of the economy, I think is a succinct way of summarizing what you're saying. I found the year-over-year job loss and gain pretty concerning. Now, it's obviously cyclical. I want to try to get a little more context from you. The sectors that are gaining, government, healthcare, education, tend to have high public subsidy and actually require a vibrant economy to continue to grow. And it's the economic, kind of, private sector jobs, it's the construction, business services, IT, manufacturing, where we're making and selling things and generating GDP and revenue that often then flows into government and health and education, where we're seeing some pretty significant, it seems to me, numbers, but without being able to see these over a time series, it's hard for me to know. If we're losing 4,200 manufacturing jobs last year, how concerned should we be? Obviously tariffs, this whole uncertainty probably won't make things better, but can you give us a little more context on the job gain and loss slide?
Sure, Mayor. I think you're absolutely right about kind of the trend and being able to see the trend. I do think as we were going through this and we were looking at kind of March to March, because we were trying to get as close to this presentation as possible, March was not a particularly great month.
This March?
Yeah. This one was not particularly great. I mean, I think the good part, at least, is that we had the tech job sector, the computer equipment, the semiconductor, which held steady at the 40,000 jobs. So we're not losing...
You said that was countywide, didn't you?
In the MSA. It's all MSA.
Okay.
Yeah. These are all MSA jobs. It's...
So it's not necessarily strictly within our city limits?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Sorry.
And quite honestly, we could drill down, but we would need additional time to be able to get at the city level. Actually, that data is not readily available, and you have to have some consultant work to do that.
Yeah. Okay. Makes sense. And yet, that is most relevant for our revenue, obviously. Job gain or loss in Sunnyvale doesn't necessarily impact our general fund much. Okay. Let me turn to colleagues. We'll go to Vice Mayor Foley.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the city manager, Jim, and your team for preparing a really thoughtful operating budget. And I also want to thank all of the staff who are here and those who may be listening in for all the work you do to provide services to our community. It doesn't, it's extremely important that you do the work you do, and we all do it together. Blagia, I want to thank you for the economic review, although it was a little bit alarming. It really isn't surprising in some ways, and you didn't create the numbers, you just reported them. So just briefly, the budget focuses on limiting impact to our employees. It's a thoughtful approach to service reduction in areas that are not our core services, which I think is critical, and preserves funding to our core services. It uses a prudent use of our reserves, not all of our reserves. It's not thought, it's not a good idea to eliminate all of your reserves, and it reallocates Measure E funding, including 10% to homeland prevention. All of that is good, and I just want to highlight that it includes no reduction in library hours. I think that's really important. I just want to make sure that we all acknowledge that we all noticed that. I do, Jim, have some questions about the revenue side and the certainty. You had a really good explanation, but I just want to highlight them a little bit. In particular, the card rooms. And then I'll get into the first responder fees when we have that CSA, but how certain are you about the first responder fees and the business tax amnesty program?
I'm sorry. I was talking. Can you repeat the question, Vice Mayor? I wanted to...
Were you not listening to me?
Prepare for the question, then I didn't actually hear the question.
I'm concerned about the stability of the funds that you projected increase in revenues, the card rooms, the first responder fees, which we have no history of, the business tax amnesty program. And then it's mentioned new grant revenues, so I'm curious what those are. So that's generally, those are all the increase in revenues. How certain are you of those?
Thank you. So we try to be as certain as we can. If we're putting revenues on the table, we want to feel that they are going to come in, absent something really unexpected happening. And so that's part of our process. If we're putting it on the table, we have a very realistic expectation that that revenue is going to be received. You know, the card rooms is a little bit tricky because it is, you know, regulatory procedures that, well, you know, I think the ongoing projection of the card room business tax revenue was really tricky because we knew that regulatory procedure was likely going to come down. What that actually means to gaming, I think it's going to significantly impact the gaming operations there. What the ultimate revenue impact will be is hard to project, so we were kind of doing our best with very limited information. But I think the fact that everyone feels confident that the implementation of those regulatory changes are really going to be pushed off to the end of the fiscal year, so I don't feel uncertain at all about the additional $5 million. So that's really just one-time revenue, that's revenue we thought we were not going to get, but now we think we're actually going to get. So that's a nuance there.
Great.
I think for the business tax amnesty program, finance has a good plan in place. We've had good historical results, and we do have a business tax amnesty program in place. We do see the money from that. So we dove in with the finance team to figure out what the plan was, who was outstanding there. The first responder fee, I think, you know, we are taking a more conservative revenue approach there, so we're not, you know, really pushing our estimates. So it is, you're right, it is a new fee. There is some uncertainty there. We think we've been relative, defensive as is appropriate. We don't want to be too defensive and not take advantage of revenue that's on the table, but we did not push that estimate. And then on the grant side, again, these are grants that we already are going to get. So we either have agreements in place or agreements that will be in place by the end of the fiscal year or some guarantees. So it's not grants that we're hoping for, grants that we absolutely expect to be getting.
Okay. Not necessarily federal grants, then?
No.
Okay. Good. And then...
And right. The biggest component of that is the PG&E-funded team in OEDCA and in Public Works. That's the biggest component of the grant piece that we feel very strongly about.
Okay. Great. Then when we get to the finance CSE, I'll ask about first responder fees and collections and all of that kind of, that thing. I won't focus on that right now. Then you also mentioned the ERAF funds, and while they're up now, you also gave me pause that they may be reduced and there may be a clawback. So how and when will that dispute be resolved, and how are you accounting for it in the budget?
That's a really good question. Do we have, so this has been a little bit of an on-running dispute for a little while. We have known that there have been uncertainty in this revenue. We have not reserved it in the past. We just kind of have been talking about it in our forecast, but it's coming a little bit more to the head now. So Santa Clara County is, has a court action with the State Controller's Office that'll start in the fall months. And so that was going to start earlier, but now that got pushed, that got pushed back. And so, you know, we really thought about it, like, hey, we've got this significant, and it's very unusual for ERAF to increase by the amount that it did. So it increased by nine and a half million dollars year over year. That's very unusual. We haven't really seen that. But again, it's because of the different calculation for the school enrollment. But in an era where, you know, we are cutting costs and reducing services, we didn't feel that we could not count this revenue since we had been in the past years, but we just have to know that if this revenue does not come to fruition and there is a potential clawback, and what that clawback is, I mean, no one really knows. That's just the amount that's technically could be in dispute, but we would expect there'd be some smaller amount that would actually have to leave the city coffers. But, so we wanted to go with that, was just eyes wide open and know that we have to adjust, we may need to, you know, adjust the budget, look at our reserve funding to deal with that specific issue.
Okay. Thank you. And then just one final question. On the expense side, I always like to bring up unfunded liabilities because it's important for us to focus on that and how it impacts our general fund, but is there any risk of increase in the unfunded liability from our pension funds and OPEB?
Yeah, there is. So in... Yeah, there is. So, and, so the, not as the retirement expert, but I learn more every time I talk with our retirement services and their actuary. So anytime the assumptions are not met, so there's a suite of assumptions that, that go into assuming, you know, what the city's contribution should, should be. The biggest one of those is the assumed rate of return. So if that rate of return is not met, as, as an example, then that adds to the unfunded liability. Now, increases or decreases in returns are generally spread out over a multi-year period from an actuarial basis, and there are other assumptions that go into it. So I don't know what that dollar amount is, but it, it would. So if, if we do fall below our expectations for our six and five-eighths percent return in our retirement system, that would increase the unfunded actuarial liability in the future years.
Right, and, and always something to, to consider. Thank you for all of that. Just to my fellow colleagues, this is my seventh budget year. So it may sound like I really know what I'm talking about. It's only because I've been here seven years and I've had a lot of time to observe it and absorb it. And I truly appreciate the briefings that I've had from Jim and, and staff, and if you haven't had one, I encourage you to take advantage of those. That's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Appreciate it. Okay, let's go to Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I also just want to start out by thanking staff, of course, Jim, City Manager, and all of the budget team for your tireless work, putting together this operational budget. And of course, to all the staff who offer such important services to our residents day in and, and day out. I just have a few questions. I think in the beginning, I think when you were introducing the budget, there was a statement that was shared that less than 15 staff members will be impacted by this operational budget. Can there be some further elaboration on what that impact may look like?
I just think we just bring down Aram, and he can explain a little bit more. And that is, just to be clear, that does contain the actions for '25, '26 and what we have in there for '26, '27. So just want to be clear on that as well, although there might be further, further actions needed in '26, '27 when we get there, but, well, that remains to be seen. Go ahead, Aram.
Good morning, Councilmembers. Aram Keen, Director of HR. The, the count is very, very modest, and it does, it spanned both years. It's under 10 people for this year. And like the City Manager said, anybody who has underlying employment rights will not lose their job. They will land in another spot. My team is already working on identifying what those positions would be. They would be through redeployments or transfers. The transfers would be if you go into another classification to which you have rights. Or redeployment would be moving to the closest classification that matches your qualifications.
Okay, follow-up question. So you mentioned anyone with underlying employment rights. So anyone with a bargaining unit, or what do you mean by that?
It could be broader than a bargaining unit. We have one unrepresented person who does not have underlying rights. As far as I'm aware, there are no other individuals who will be separated from the city.
So one individual is going to be losing their job?
One unrepresented.
Okay, do we know what the classification of that job is?
I do, I would, I would prefer not to disclose it for privacy reasons.
They don't know yet.
Because, because it's a single-user classification. It would be very easy to identify the person.
I see, I see. And I know that, I guess we were doing everything we could to try to save jobs, but this is just a job that we just couldn't find the money for?
This, this was, this was a cut that was embedded in the original calculations for the savings, and, and it could not be salvaged.
Okay. All right, well, I guess I'll connect with you offline. I'm, you know, it's obviously not a good thing to have to cut jobs, but I know that that wasn't the intention of the formulation of the budget. So due to the respect for the anonymity of the individual, I'll follow up offline, but-
And Councilmember, I think, just as a clarification, Aram, I think many of the people will stay in their exact same classifications within their department, as I understand it too, as part of the initial analysis. So people will just, if, I'll just give an example. If they were a staff specialist in one, in the department in that job, they'll just move to a different vacant staff specialist within that same department. So a lot of people are not going to be actually leaving departments, either their home base.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And then my next question is in regards to the reallocation of Measure E dollars. And I think you were going kind of fast, Jim, and we didn't want to interrupt you while you were talking, but I think you mentioned that the remainder, after the reallocation, the remainder of Measure E dollars will be $60 million. Is, is that accurate?
No, the, so the, the total Measure E revenue is $55 million in '25, '26, and it goes up to $60 million in '26. So that's why the numbers are different bottom line, just because the revenue projections we have go up the following fiscal year.
Okay, so that's before the reallocation. So then what will we have after?
Yeah, so that's the total revenue amount. And so the amount for, the amount that's being reallocated from the policy change, from affordable housing to sheltering and operations is, and services, is $39.2 million in '25, '26. Which then, because the revenue also goes up, increases to $42.8 million in '26, '27. And that's, you can kind of see that breakdown. If you look on page 18 of the Transmittal Messages, there's a little table there that sort of breaks that out too. You can see that.
Just for the record, can you tell us after the allocation, how many millions of dollars will we have left for affordable housing?
Oh, zero in Measure E for-
So zero Measure E dollars. Okay. Just one thing I, I think is just top of mind is as we were looking at the economic outcomes, thank you Blagay for that very important presentation. We noticed a kind of some stark numbers for our African-American community. And the, we are in discussions right now of the development of the African-American Cultural Center, which will be having some affordable housing components to them. I think it's important for this council to make sure that we can provide some dollars, especially as we look at how systemic issues has impacted the African-American community. And really, the city of San Jose has not been intentional with making sure that we are giving that population a good economic standing and resources intentional to, to not necessarily make up, but for do, to do what's right for that population. And so I, I think that's something that this council should be thinking about. I think their ask is for $16 million, whether that comes from Measure E or from another source. But I think we have an obligation to correct past wrongs, whether it was us on that council or past individuals who made decisions that have negatively impacted that population. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. I, I do want to say for context, for everyone's context, I really appreciate the work staff has done this year to minimize impacts on our workforce. Obviously, even one job loss is, is something we, we never want to see. City of LA this year is cutting 2,700 jobs, nearly 1,700 of which are currently filled with employees. Just to put it in, just to, to give everybody that, that kind of level setting. So we are doing comparably well. But let me, let's turn to Councilman Campos next.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to, to our team, to our department. I'm grateful to our City Manager and all, all of the staff within our department teams working diligently to prepare a balanced budget that we are now reviewing over the next few weeks. I want to express my sincere appreciation to Jim Shannon, who came into our district, provided a great Budget Town Hall in District Two, and has spent so much time working with me as a new council member and my team to walk through the different trade-offs that we need to understand about the decisions we're about to make with this proposed budget. I know that it's difficult work for everybody, and I appreciate the efforts that we're all making to minimize the negative impacts on our community. I, I want to follow the conversation Councilmember Ortiz began about Measure E allocations and investments in homelessness prevention. I'm grateful to see that we are preserving money for homelessness prevention through the proposed Measure E allocation. And it would be helpful to hear some of the programs that this prevention funding would be allocated to. I have particular interest in the programs that we can verify are deployed directly to San Jose residents.
Thank you for the question. I think I might ask Eric Sullivan, our Housing Director, to come to speak to that.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Eric Sullivan, the Housing Director. So in looking at some of the funding allocations and how, and we can speak to this later in the presentation today. Some of our alternative forms are providing that support for the continuation of financing affordable housing. We'll get into that part of the presentation later today as to what those examples are, as we spent the last few months working with some of our partners to identify some clear pathways for alternative ways of financing, and then taking some of our existing resources and looking at ways we could refinance them to create some revenue streams. As we could provide much more detail later today as we go through the presentation.
I think there's also a question maybe about the homeless prevention slice of it. So what are the examples of the homelessness prevention piece of it, the, the remaining 10%?
Yes, and the remaining 10% for the homelessness prevention, that continues to expand the existing homelessness prevention system. So right now, we have spent in the current fiscal year $7.5 million on prevention of homelessness, on the prevention system, which is a collaboration with the county. That 10% set aside will put about just over $5.5 million into that continuing services as we look to invest into prevention, to continue that work.
Right, I, I hear you. I, I think that, you know, working collaboration with our county is key. And just want to make sure that we're understanding the types of prevention programs that are included in this funding. So just some specific examples, if, if you could let me know if I'm, if I'm understanding this correctly. But some of these programs are immediate cash assistance that can be used towards rent utilities and other basic expenses, legal support and eviction defense, because many times those who are experiencing eviction do not have access to a lawyer with their personal funds, and many times the landlords do. So this is helping, you know, to level the playing field there. Case management services, assistance, applying for benefits, help accessing services and resources provided by other parties, our county, partners, our county, and nonprofit partners. Do those sound like the types of programs that, that we would be providing our residents in San Jose access to with these prevention dollars?
Yes, and in addition to that, the prevention dollars are always time-limited. So that assistance being provided, in addition to what you stated, is for limited time periods. As a majority of the funds, in addition to the supportive services you articulated, also go to rent payment assistance for short two-year periods as well. So that way, it complements not just the provision of rental subsidies, but the surrounding services you listed as support services to ensure the transition off of the program.
And as a fault to that, I think there's also, there's four positions in Housing Department that are going to be continuing for the eviction, eviction prevention staffing work that had been funded on a grant basis by the state that's expiring. And so that'll be picked up by the Measure E funds to continue that, continue that work.
Thank you. So continuing in this, I, I think, Eric, maybe you can continue with this next question. Because what I'm, I'm seeing is that we're also proposing a current amount of proposed funding for homelessness prevention, which is less than it was in the current year. Is that true?
Yes, because of the adjustment downwards of the baselining of Measure E, that's where that adjustment came from.
Just to be clear, it's the same percentage. It's just revenues, revenues for Measure E go up and down. Is that correct?
I don't think so. I think the ongoing revenue is actually still higher. I think, you know, there's carryover funding from prior years that, that carried forward to the '24, '28, '25 budget. But I think the amount of ongoing funding for Measure E at the 10% level, that, the percentage amount is still the same. I think that revenue from an ongoing perspective is actually a little bit higher than it is in the '24, '25 fiscal year. So we had a $50 million revenue estimate in '24, '25, $55 million for next year, so it does go up slightly.
So the one-time 7.5 was higher than what we had been doing previously, essentially?
I mean, I, the seven, I'm not sure what the last year's, what the current budget is in '24, but the amount we have for '25, '26 is 7.84 million, and it would have been a slightly lower amount in '24, '25. I, I don't think we are reducing by any, any means the ongoing amount for homelessness prevention funding in Measure E.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for those answers. Those were, those were all the questions that I had. I, I think it's really important that, that we are taking into strong consideration the impact that we are making when we are investing in prevention services and using our dollars towards prevention, especially given that in Santa Clara County, over 4,000 households fell into homelessness in 2024, of which 21% of these households were families with children. We know that among young adults experiencing homelessness, 24% reported a history of foster care. 57% of households served by county-wide homelessness prevention programs were families with children. And so as we're, you know, making these difficult decisions and thinking about our overview and how we can best use our dollars to drive impact, impact in addressing our current crisis with people living on the streets, but also trying to prevent future crises and preventing the flow of our residents in San Jose becoming homeless. Those are the opportunities that I see before us, and I look forward to working with my colleagues and city staff to find ways that we can address the need to prevent homelessness. I also had a couple of questions, just to help me better understand-
Councilmember, I think Jim Shannon wanted to jump in.
I just wanted to clarify my early remarks. I think I just was misstating the, the wrong number. So the ongoing, so in '24, '25, the ongoing amount for homelessness prevention was 4.75. In '25, '26, it'll be 5.23, and in '26, '27, 5.7. I was just looking at the wrong number on the, on the chart. Just want to clarify that.
And then, Councilor, if you have more questions on the general overview, let's do that now quickly with your last couple minutes. Otherwise, we're going to go deeper into this in the housing section, and I do want to get us to our next section. We're, we're about a half hour behind schedule.
Okay, completely understand. So I guess I, I will just ask one last question. I know that there is a lot of work before us. We have a very ambitious direction given in the Mayor's budget message. And regarding the city's work plan, I'm, I'm curious about how, you know, given the significant amount of new policy work, how is the City Manager's office determining what current policy work will be deferred or dropped entirely? What items will remain prioritized?
That's a great question. We're going to be issuing a manager's budget addendum on that shortly, but Lee, do you want to explain a little bit more about what we're doing?
Sure. So we should be getting a manager's budget addendum out sometime later this week or probably next week that outlines our overall approach to the referrals, as well as just policy work with the council in general, offering recommendations. So we've been working with department directors to go through that process. There's over 500 referrals. So some are being recommended to drop, some will be recommended to pause. We're recommending others really go into the council focus areas and allow staff to keep them there and prioritize what will have a bigger impact, given where we're at. And so you will have the ability to kind of go through that item by item and referral, by referral, and see what we're recommending.
And I think we're carving out sometime, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, next Monday, to go over, to, to have time for the council to discuss our recommendations in that regard.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember. Just, just as we transition, I want to just note two things quickly. One is, and we'll go deeper in the housing section on the topics, some of the topics that were raised here. On Measure E, I do want to remind the council, though, that our strategy thus far, at least in the message that was adopted, is to, in any year when revenues are higher than what is needed for the existing interim housing system, do another NOFA. In fact, this year, we're doing about $60 million worth of new funding for affordable housing. So the Measure E revenues are variable. We have had years when they have come in at the $100 million mark. And so that would enable us to do one time, which is what a NOFA is, take $30, $40 million and fund the next few affordable housing projects. Part of the challenge we're seeing here, and Jim can correct me if I'm wrong, but Measure E revenues are lower than what we had had a few years ago and are projected to be relatively low and flat for the next couple of years. So we're not seeing a lot of funding to do that next NOFA, so we are squeezed at the moment. But I want to assure the council that three years from now, we may see an uptick and suddenly have a moment where we can do the next $50 million tranche of funding for affordable housing. So it's variable. I just want to emphasize that point, and our strategy is to use the excess to fund affordable housing. It's also not our only source of funding. We have loan repayments and other sources of funding for affordable housing, really worth noting. And then we'll go, we'll go deeper into prevention in another section, but I do just want to caution that the need for rental assistance in our county is on the order of billions- assistance in our county is on the order of billions of dollars a year. And so we have to keep in mind our ability as a city to do what is effectively a UBI at scale is very limited. I think we would need other levels of government to put much more of an emphasis if we were going to move the needle by paying for people's rent. We can do it in the short run in a very targeted way to prevent people from literally falling onto the streets, but the scale of the need is astronomical relative to our entire budget, in fact. So we just, we have to really think a little more about. We'll get deeper into that in the coming sections. But now we're going to transition into community and economic development, which is a great place to start because, again, the revenue we have to spend on all of these things, including prevention, really flows from the health of our local economy and the revenues that we have. So let's take a second to transition and then we'll turn it back Thank you. Yeah, let's jump in.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Councils. Eric Soloway, Director of Housing. And I'll begin by thanking my colleagues, Chris Burton, Matt Lesz, Chief Sapien, Rosalyn Huey, for their collaborations on this presentation. In order to maximize our time for Q and A, myself and Lee Wilcox, Assistant City Manager and Acting Director of OED, we'll talk through just a few slides today, providing an overview of the Community and Economic Development City Service Area. So for our first slide, the core services provided under this interdepartmental collaboration touch on the primary components of our community and economic development, beginning with land use and planning that facilitates private development serviced by our Public Works and Fire Departments to ensure code and compliance for projects generated and financed by the Office of Economic Development and the Department of Housing. And during the construction period, these projects are then monitored through construction inspection by PBCE. And so this represents sort of the cohort of work being done under the CED. The next slide reflects just the city area and the full life cycle of services for the city's community and economic development. The program examples highlighted in this slide demonstrate the fabric of services woven together to advance the development in planning services, fire services, business and cultural assistance, and housing development, loans, asset management, and the apartment rent ordinance administration.
On March 18th, the city council passed a new economic development strategy consisting of five objectives. As part of that overall direction, the administration said that we'd be conducting a comprehensive evaluation of the Office of Economic Development Cultural Affairs specifically focused around the core services and programs to help achieve those five objectives. That work is underway. And in the coming week, coming days or weeks, we will be issuing a manager's budget addendum to outline this new approach. Do you want to state on page 422 of the proposed budget, that does outline the current set of core services and programs, which currently consist of five core services, 19 programs. However, tentatively, we'll be moving forward with what's on this slide now, which is four core services and 14 programs. This does modernize and align the department's overall work around San Jose's highest impact economic goals of job creation, downtown vitality, cultural activation, and talent development. It further strengthens the department's approach, whereas very functional now, this integrates those objectives across different programs. You have multiple programs and people trying to achieve those highest impacts. It further positions real estate to be a strategic economic development partner and drive development along with the Office of Economic Development staff, positions cultural affairs and activations as an economic driver, and does expand our workforce mission. The manager's budget addendum that will be coming out will further go into the Office of Economic Development Cultural Affairs' new service delivery model, the department's summary of these core services, aligning to those objectives that the council had previously passed, as well as performance measures and activity and workload highlights. With that, I'll hand it back to Eric.
The CED City Service Area Dashboard provides snapshots of key performance metrics, including job retention and attraction, downtown foot traffic under the direction of OED, on-time permitting and planning under the direction of the Department of Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement, and housing production and rent stabilization services under the direction of the Department of Housing. The budget summary captured on this portion of the presentation goes through just some quick summaries of key changes that advance the City Service Area under the CED. And I will highlight just a few significant changes on this slide. For OED, the one-time 7.7 million dollar decrease in FY '2425 to FY '2526 reflects a one-time projection of projects that were occurring and then funds being expended. Some of those projects are still in development, but we're capturing that reduction in the total funds of those one-time expenditures in this slide. In addition, for the housing department, the $65 million decrease from FY '2425 to FY '2526 reflects housing projects that will finally be financed and move into construction as the department aligned and prioritized capital stacking with the state, the county, and the housing authority to move more projects forward. So again, one-time projects that are finally being expended and we're utilizing those dollars. As we transition to FY '2526, this slide captures a few, certainly not all, but just a few of the CED priorities in the service area and the implementation of our work plan and our strategy for the following key items: major sporting events in '26, 2026, the facilitation of housing production through the revisions to the regulations for the inclusionary housing ordinance in response to the March budget message, and gap financing for affordable housing development of up to 60 or 70 million dollars, as well as updating the general plan for the four-year review, streamlining the sequel process, and publicizing development services processing and improvements accelerating the department's delivery of the large electric load projects. And this is just a brief summary of the work being done by the according departments. In addition, the housing department will continue, as mentioned prior, to pursue partnerships in working with the finance department, ways in which we can find alternative sources of revenues to fund and continue to expand our pipeline of affordable housing projects under the gap financing program. These methods include looking at strategies, as Jim had mentioned earlier, such as bond financing, ways that through taking existing loan repayments that we receive in receipts and ways to monetize that, looking at master leasing options, looking at ways in which we can refinance existing projects that may have been originally financed during higher interest rate environments, and targeting a few subset of those projects, as well as looking at ways we can better target some of our work around asset refinancing. And together, these three strategies can produce somewhere on the target of about $100 million, as was mentioned during the budget overview session. This next slide is in support of sort of the primary activities that the proposed budget actions are going to be in supporting that were originally highlighted earlier, including the support of major sporting events, staffing the energy customer development services team, funding the storefront activation grants, and continued improvements in development services and sequel processing. In summary, Chris, Matt, Robert, Rosalyn, myself, will continue to collaborate to boost our economic growth, our infrastructure, housing, and production, increasing the consistency of development processing, and continue to build out the city's entertainment and sports infrastructure in order to make San Jose a premier destination. That is our brief presentation and we will now ready to take your questions.
Great. Appreciate it. That was faster than expected. So that's wonderful, though. So that means we have a lot more time for discussion here on community and economic development. We do have a hard stop at noon, which is an hour and 10 minutes from now, and we need to leave a little bit of room at the end for public comment. I don't know, Tony, let me ask you, do we have any comment cards yet? Okay, great. So we don't need, hopefully, it doesn't sound like we'll need much time for that. So we've got about an hour. Let me turn to colleagues and we'll start with Councilmember Kamai.
Thank you so much and thank you for the presentation. One of the things that I was thinking about as we move forward, especially when we're looking at the sporting events, is that I know that there's opportunity to grow, especially with entertainment zones and all of that. But, you know, I was wondering, is this sort of growing the pie going to be a continuous thing? Because I know we're sort of like aiming towards 2026, but at the same time, you know, there are dips and valleys in terms of when those big things do come, yet there's great expenditure. So I'm just wondering, as we move forward with our budget, how should we be thinking about this? How is staff thinking about this in terms of the ongoing as opposed to the dips and valleys of opportunity?
Councilmember Lee Wilcox, Assistant City Manager and Acting Director of OEDCA. I would say I think we're looking at it, we're trying to put a strategy together and a framework together where we don't have those peaks and valleys, essentially. I think 2026 is going to be a huge opportunity for us to show well. However, there is direction as part of the March message around us taking a step back and looking at the downtown and a sports and arts, a sports and entertainment district around Deardon Station and how we better position that area and the downtown as really the hub of all of South Bay for sports, arts, and entertainment. Also, that's where we're headed with the realignment of core services and programs, is more of a specific emphasis on arts, sports, and entertainment as an economic driver, where we have more of an ongoing revenue stream, but also opportunities for our residents to participate in those. So that's where we're headed in the long term, but really trying to even out those peaks and valleys.
That sounds great. I think that the more you can say about that and let the council sort of participate in that, I think it'd be helpful because, you know, I do know that when those big events come, they're great, they're wonderful, people love it, but then they go away. And so I think that in terms of how do you smooth out some of those peaks and valleys, and I do know that, you know, there is thinking about, okay, well, what else can we do that that will be the next thing in '27 and '28 and that sort of thing? So sharing that earlier rather than later, I think helps us also think about the big picture, whether it's, you know, two years down the line, five years down the line, in terms of investing in some of these expenditures that pay dividend over a longer period of time.
Yeah, so we'll start to outline that in the manager's budget addendum, just within the department, how this is going to be more of a focus. But also, we are supposed to come back before the end of the year on conceptual plans for how the city would proceed with the sports and entertainment district around the planning, how that would be financed, and some conceptual ideas. So those will be ongoing conversations that we'll absolutely be having with the council.
Great. Thank you.
Next, councilmember. Let me go to Councilmember Mulcahy.
Thank you, Mayor. My mother-in-law always leaves me books with like a little note and she's never given me anything this big, so, but I didn't get the note, so, but thank you. And thanks for all the hard work. I didn't speak during the first round, but to all of you in the prior session and going forward. And maybe this is an opportunity to link both. So Eric, you were just talking about the refi and opportunities to create more, you know, cash for investment into affordable housing. And then Jim, in your presentation, Slide 15, you had the slide on affordable housing resources, the 60 million from Measure E, which I want to hear a little bit more about. And I think we're in the same category here, so it's probably appropriate to ask it of both of you to help illustrate that slide a little bit more. I think I understand the sources to create the second part of the box. I'm not sure I understood where that 60 for Measure E is being invested and how we're still have that much.
Sure. So I'll speak to that and then have Jim jump in here. So when we look at the prior year NOFAs that were executed going back to 2021, so years ago, and projects that had committed funds that never actually occurred because they were not able to align their capital stacking, both with state credits, state funding, county funding, housing authority funding, the capital stack of six or seven different initiatives. So what we had done over the last year was align that capital stacking with state, county, and housing authorities so we can take those funds and expend them and put them into projects that are ready to move forward. And so as we're then looking at that bucket of funds that come from multiple sources, not just Measure E, it's also loan repayments, our low mod fund, our linkage fee funds, our IHO fee funds, we've done a comprehensive washing across all of our different funds in the department to put together the complete set of funding that we can make available to finance the projects that are coming back through to reset the pipeline under the RFP we recently released. And so that $60 million of funds reflects primarily three areas. One, a conglomeration of funding of projects that did not process, but now we have prioritized new projects to move forward by aligning the capital stacking. Two, pulling together all the funds that we've done of sort of a deep cleaning of all of our funding sources throughout the department to gather and collect funds, contracts that were never executed on or were never properly used. And so we've collected all those funds together to put it together into this bucket of funds that is going to be the next NOFA. And then three, working with the state, the county, and the housing authority to line up the funding sources so that we can move particular projects that are ready to go into construction. And that is where the NOFA funding and the 60 million comes from.
That is excellent. And it sort of reminds me that you briefed me on many of those elements, you know, two briefings ago. So that helps illustrate a lot for me. So thank you. Not that that money gets deployed, you know, next year, but basically in your toolbox, you've got access to about 160 million after a lot of work to create that for the coming years.
That's correct. And the other part of that, that 100 million side, is looking through the various strategies. How do we take monetization of the existing loan portfolio repayments? How do we look at asset refinancing for areas and projects that have been financed in the past and maybe are experiencing distress due to a whole host of economic conditions? And then three, looking at alternative strategies such as master leasing that does not provide direct upfront payments, but instead provides backend supports through continuing financial assistance through a leasing model.
Great. Well, I think the most important, well, one of the many important things you talked about is not allowing funds that we deploy languish because of, you know, a developer not producing. So appreciate that. Maybe switching gears just a little bit, I think again ties into this presentation. I know it's a small item of our, you know, of our sort of earned revenue, if you will, on the business license fees. Jim, this sort of goes to economic development and some of the priorities that this presentation is talking about. You know, we have business improvement districts and there are businesses that, you know, pay into the system as part of their property, excuse me, as part of their business license fees. When we don't collect, the business associations that depend on that bid money doesn't get it. It's part of the reason why, you know, the heavier It's part of the reason why, you know, the heavier lift to become a property business improvement district or community benefit improvement district, because that comes through property tax, which nobody misses. So, I'm just curious, you know, did we recently approve an improvement to how we're collecting business taxes? Do I remember that being on an agenda recently?
Do you mean business taxes or contributions?
Business license, sorry. You know, the business license fees that we collect.
Well, we do have, I mean, just the pure business tax, which is, also comes with a business license. I don't know, someone can jump me if I make, I don't think we have any new processes there.
We can save it for later.
Okay.
What I'm talking about is if you're a retailer and you pay your, you know, your annual business license fee, part of what gets on there, if you're in a bid, you know, it's $200 bucks goes towards the little improvement district that has been created. If that business license fee is not collected, that neighborhood association, or that business association doesn't get their resources. So, these amnesties that we do every four years, it's great to boost the tax rule, but for four years, there's business districts that haven't been getting what they were depending on, because we're not collecting the fee.
That's a good question.
We can save this for another day, but I just want to make sure people understand.
Maria, can you come down and help?
There's a correlation there. You got your steps in.
Counsel, Mayor, I'm Maria Ober, I'm the Director of Finance. I can give you a little bit more detail on how we collect those fees when we come back on Monday, but they are collected slightly differently. So, the business license tax is a separate invoice, and the BID would be a separate one as well.
Yeah, so, just note of caution, that's an interesting area, I think, as, you know, the message is talking about creating more BIDs in our city. We have other colleagues who want them in their district, but if we're not collecting on the front end the business license fees, those districts don't get their money.
That is correct.
And so, that's the volatility within our small business communities who depend on resources to be able to enliven their street, clean their, you know, windows and beautification efforts. So, I'll be really interested in how we're going to do better in that regard.
Yep, we'll be happy to bring something back on Monday.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, councilmember, appreciate it. Let's go over to Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Thank you, Eric, for your very important presentation. Just want to clarify a few things in regards to the Measure E allocation, just for the public. I know that it's stated in the slides that $0 would be used for affordable housing, and all those dollars would be taken for shelter services, but that decision hasn't been made yet. Looks like we're planning for the decision to be made, but it hasn't been made yet. In order for that to be done, there needs to be eight votes in support of that. There were four votes against this budget. And so, I just want to make sure that we're being transparent with that, and that the community knows that the decision for where Measure E dollars are being used and the decision to defund affordable housing in the city of San Jose has yet to be made. And I'm going to continue to advocate, at least for the $16 million, for the African-American Cultural Center. Thank you.
Thanks, councilmember, appreciate you highlighting that. I do think, Jim, Shannon, maybe you could give us a sense of, the proposal that, it is true, a majority of the council supported, is really around aligning most of Measure E, but I also want to make a difference, a distinction between the percentages and the actual revenues. Because in years where revenues are at the high end of the range, we've seen there would be a lot of money for new affordable housing. In years when it's lower, as it is this year, it would be consumed with prevention and operating the interim units. The thing that council should be aware of, though, is that last year, we committed to building out the interim housing that is already opening, has people in it, is under construction, will open over the next few months. So, I do, well, I very much hope we don't end up in some sort of stalemate in a couple of months. Any council members who want to suggest an alternative will need to do just that, whether it's pausing construction on the interim housing that is underway right now, closing the interim housing units that have been open earlier this year or last year, the year before. These budget decisions, both often the capital outlay first, and then the ongoing operating decisions, do carry over multiple years and over multiple councils. And that's not to say that a given council can't change direction, but there is also a cost to that. There's no free lunch, as economists like to say. So, it is correct that the Measure E direction is not final, and that's very fair to say, but I do just want to caution that were we to not go down the route that a majority of the council did direct in the March message, we would need to understand the offsets, which would almost certainly mean a combination of layoffs and closures of interim housing and potentially returning people to the streets. So, there's a, there's just, that'll need to be worked out, and that's totally valid for a individual council member or a Brown Act of council members to go explore, but I just want to set that expectation that it's not as simple as a vote to not do the Measure E reallocation. Okay, let me turn to Councilmember Candelas.
Thank you, Mayor. No, thank you, Eric and team, for this presentation. You know, I appreciate the focus and work, especially with regards to the major sporting events that are happening next year, the storefront activation grants, and our investment in nurturing our small business ecosystem within our city. I think that's critical. You know, along the CSA, I've had meetings with interested applicants who are looking at development and opportunities in my district, but, you know, some of the things we heard is staff and planning staff specifically are often stretched thin based on so many, so many projects that we're handling. And so, as these projects are popping up one at a time in areas, quite frankly, not designated for growth as part of our general plan, I'm concerned with the potential for a sort of hodgepodge development, if you will, that lacks a genuine cohesive vision. And so, I guess my question is to what kind of bandwidth and capacity does our staff in our city, Chris, have as it relates to development in these non-growth areas to ensure we have mindful and that we're thoroughly analyzing any potential project, given the economic context we heard in the preview with regards to our lack of housing in general and that disparity between actual housing costs in our city compared to everywhere else in the United States?
Thank you, councilmember.
It's an easy question for you.
Yes, super easy, that's great, thank you. Chris Burton, Director of Planning, Building, Code Enforcement. So, just to kind of parcel this out a little bit, because there's a lot there. So, as we look at land use and development across the entire city, right, we're sort of using the general plan as our guide for that. So, we have an underlying framework for land use that establishes kind of where we expect to see particular uses. And, you know, all of the policies and municipal code sections that sort of direct development really stem from that, it stands as kind of our constitution for development. So, that's the sort of the very comprehensive look. And then, as we've kind of built that general plan, it really considers how we look at sort of key areas where we anticipate growth and sort of do more specific work within those areas. Now, that's not to say that development can't happen anywhere within the city. There's property rights that exist on every property, you know, private property throughout the city, and we respond to all of those applications equally. Really, the capacity that we have is dictated by the demand that's coming in the door, right? As a cost recovery organization, within the city organization, we're really looking at what that kind of balance of development is year over year. I will tell you, probably when I started as an entry-level planner that did development review work, there was something like about 20 or just slightly less than 20 development review project managers. We're currently at about six, based on the level of demand. What I will say, though, is there are other fundamental changes to the way that we operate that occur right now. So, all of the work that we've seen done by the state around housing development has kind of shifted the way we work and shifted the kind of priority around development and kind of how it happens. So, so much of the work that we're doing right now is at the policy level, at the citywide level, and the general plan level, and that's implementing what we do at the development review end. And so, there's really a balancing act that goes on within that.
Right, and, you know, part of that is, you know, that that cost recovery underlying fundamental, if you will, is kind of the driver for this hodgepodge of projects, if you will, right? It's kind of a conundrum there that we have to deal with. And so, now my question leads to, you know, we're currently, or we're about to undertake a four-year review of the general plan, correct? So, my question or my challenge to staff is how can we think proactively in areas that is marketable and feasible, where the demand is taking us, is how can we be proactive as a city, so we're not unintentionally causing consequences within our communities for lack of thorough engagement, thorough analysis, just because, you know, within our general plan, which, that's why I stated that we're in that four-year review process, that we are not able to think about how to proactively protect our communities and come out with a, you know, a win-win situation, if I will.
Yeah, and I think that's certainly a great point, and exactly what the four-year review was intended to do was to sort of take some of these bigger issues and give us a forum in which we could analyze them without triggering a full redo of the general plan. So, you know, there's definitely going to be some of those aspects within this review, and I think we'll have the opportunity to kind of really drive that forward and create a meaningful conversation.
Thank you, Chris. And, you know, the hope is to essentially bring, you know, those in, applicants, those in the development community, along with residents, together for a cohesive vision. That's my goal, that ultimately gets us, gets us somewhere that's positive and a net benefit for the city. We understand the pie graph, if you will, of lands associated with, within our city with regards to industrial, open space, and residential, but I think this is also a unique opportunity to do what's great for our residents and do it in a thoughtful way. And the last thing I'll say is, Eric, I appreciate the creativity in regards to our housing department's affordable housing production, you know, whether it's the bond financing, master lease financing, these mechanisms or these programs are essentially allowing us to tap money where otherwise it would be fairly difficult. And until, you know, the shift in voter appetite with regards to other funding, I think this is a good work, it's a lot of work ahead, but it's a good direction for us to head in to help bolster our affordable housing production, because you all know that it's not a boom-bust cycle. And the moment we disinvest, you know, it takes years to build that pipeline and build that confidence in the market, in the affordable housing market, which is difficult in its own, to bring us back. So, I appreciate this buffer, if you will, and look forward to seeing how that turns out. Thanks.
Thanks, councilmember. Let me go now to Councilmember Salas.
Speaking of business licenses and taxes, there are a significant number of unlicensed food vendors in my district, and I've heard from my colleagues, and there's too. Is there some plan in economic development to be expanding the pilot programs that we had, which I understand worked pretty well, but it takes a lot of coordination between code enforcement, the county, and PD? Is there some plan to be, not focusing on that, but at least including that in this whole economic development model?
Thank you, Councilmember Salas Rosalyn Huey, Deputy City Manager. So, when staff brought the amended peddler's ordinance to council in March, we did indicate that, as a result of what we learned through the enforcement pilots last year, that we thought those changes to the ordinance would help us in terms of enforcement mechanisms. The police department will, you know, continue to enforce. As relates to unpermitted vending on private property, that's when we would have to engage with our code enforcement inspectors to investigate those items. But clearly, we are still fully aware of the issues of unpermitted vendings throughout the city. We continue to work with our partner Prosperity Lab in terms of working with those vendors who are interested in becoming permitted and getting them on the path to actually be at these special events to sell their products, and we will continue to work with Prosperity Lab in that matter. I think in the meantime, we've been speaking with staff in terms of helping the general public understand what they should do when they come across the instances of unpermitted vending, developing some messaging so they know who exactly to contact, whether it be police department, whether it's code enforcement.
And just as a quick follow-up, so we do have that $100,000 funded on an ongoing basis for the peddler mitigation program as part of the citywide expenses on page 804 for your future reference.
Thank you. And then, just briefly also, in terms of Lee, you mentioned showing well. I know I was walking to a Sharks game just before the season ended, and there are lots of people, it's wonderful, and then there's one or two of these poor unfortunate souls who make a big production of screaming and yelling. And Eric, this is probably way along your lines. I know when I was doing that, I called Groundworks, they have social outreach, but by the time someone actually showed up, it was long past the image that was produced as to all those people who walked there. Again, thoughts on social impact relative to particularly the 2026 opportunities?
Yes, so, we've been working with the other departments as we're preparing for 2026 to ensure we have added capacity within the shelter system that we're currently developing, as well as Matt and I have been talking through other strategies to add some additional capacity to that, to ensure as we're bringing on all these events in 2026, we're able to provide a landing place that is decent, safe, and well-managed for individuals in the downtown area and other areas impacted by the coming sporting events. So, that's part of the collaborative work that we're engaging in to ensure that that visitor experience is as best as we can provide it.
You talk about a landing place, I'm talking about instantaneous issues that come up. I was in Albuquerque last weekend at Central Avenue on the middle on Saturday evening, and there was very visible people that were, had yellow jackets on, they were stationed. I know Groundworks has a few of those, but typically you have to call them. I'm just encouraging you to be looking at that. The visibility of people with yellow jackets at those moments when one or two of the unfortunate souls are creating a big issue can make a huge difference.
Great, thanks, councilmember, appreciate it. Let me go to Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Chris. I almost let you go before I asked you my questions. I'm glad that Councilmember Candelas mentioned a couple of things that made me trigger the comments that I need to make, and they're related to SEQA. I'll start with SEQA. I'm glad to see the allocation dedicated to streamlining and improving the SEQA process, permit fees, and project tracking, et cetera. This investment is an opportunity to grow our future task base. Our developers all complain, the majority of them, about the impediment to development and in the city, how hard it is to work through the SEQA process. So, I have some specific SEQA questions. How will the one-time funding of $250,000 and staffing shifts support this SEQA streamlining work? What specifically will staff and the consultant be working on? Will it include standardizing residential impacts, mitigations for traffic, noise, et cetera, expanding the ministerial ordinance in downtown, airport land use area, or other areas, outlining roles and expectations for environmental consultants, timing, et cetera, creating standard templates for preparing SEQA and NEPA documents? That's extensive question number one.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, I just want to be clear, there's a couple of different parts that are going on with kind of how we're approaching SEQA. There is a funding shift internally that's going on, because we're transitioning, we don't just drive the private developers mad with SEQA, we do it to our city partners as well. So, for any public project that's moving through the process, you know, it's the same SEQA team that's working on that. So, in the past, other departments have helped fund two of the positions that are in our SEQA team. We're shifting the funding within that so that it mirrors the hourly rate model that we use for private development, so that we can sort of move the available resources back and forth to create more efficiency within the kind of way that we're operating within that. It's a relatively small team. As to the other sort of budget action, as part of our, the sort of comprehensive look of the entire sort of Fund 238 budget that we were kind of doing through this budget process, we were identifying how we were shifting some resources. So, there's been a So there's been a longstanding Planner 4 position on our CEQA team that we've been unable to fill because the majority of the funding associated with that position was in the fee model. And so that's the sort of net add is to, to fill the rest of that capacity so we can hire for that Planner 4. The intent is to really focus that on, if you'll recall, there was a 2022 audit on the CEQA process that came out with a number of recommendations that we've started implementing, but you know, there's more to go, as well as other improvements that we've identified both in-house and in conjunction with the consultants and the development community where we see opportunities to continue to, to focus. So really, that's the intent is to use that funding to fill that position, to have a dedicated resource that can focus on some of those pieces, exactly to what you're saying about standard conditions, about sort of, you know, looking at mitigations, about how we expand ministerial. It's just giving us more capacity to implement the work plan that we currently have in place.
Okay, so does that mean we'll see CEQA streamlining policies come to us in the next fiscal year?
Yeah, so a lot of this was sort of baked into the report that we did at CED back in February. So if you'll recall, it was the attachment to that which laid out a lot of these changes. A lot of the changes are really sort of functional and internal, but yes, through the rest of this calendar year, we'll be looking to bring back more of the actual sort of code changes and implement some of those guidelines as we move forward.
Okay, great. I do want to shift my attention to Coyote Valley and the CEQA study that's there. I appreciate the report that you've given to CED regarding the staffing and that the need to delay the CEQA, the Coyote Valley corridor study is necessary because of a staffing issue and not necessarily tied to a funding issue as much, but I don't want to lose sight of it. We've made commitments to the community that this work be done. I'm mindful that we need to postpone it, but can you tell me if, what, what if, what the impact is to the Coyote Valley corridor study, study in the budget? And if it's being, if the study's being deferred, can we bring it back as a regular discussion at our CED meetings to, we don't want to lose it as a focus area, although I understand staffing is a critical piece of it, but I just want to keep it top of mind that we're not losing focus on it.
So thank you for the question. I think there's a couple of different components to this one. So council direction was to, after we made the changes to the land uses in Coyote Valley, to designate them as agricultural, that we explore through this study agricultural-like uses that might provide those property owners with kind of other opportunities to monetize their, their properties. We've, we've been working closely with the community since that point with the stakeholders and the, the property owners that are there. I think we've got through that sort of initial body of work with the list of proposed uses. I don't think there was a lot of consensus between the property owners and other stakeholders, certainly the environmental community on what the process would look like. And so it kind of puts us in a difficult position in sort of taking the money, so the, the money that was associated with the CEQA process to go with that. So obviously, it's a change to the, we would be creating an overlay in the area, so we have to go through a CEQA process. That was allocated out of Fund 239, which is our citywide planning fund. We are looking at how we not only prioritize the staff work, but also the monies within that fund so that we can actually deliver on the four-year review over the next fiscal year, which is, you know, a stepping stone for us to be able to meet our next housing element goal in January of 2031, which seems like a long way away, but it's really not, and avoid the impacts of future builders' remedy projects. That's ultimately what's sort of driving the conversation. So, so we are looking at that balance. The challenge is, is that, you know, when we look at the money that's allocated to that CEQA, and we're kind of at a critical point, you either go down the path and start that process and invest all that money, or you don't, you kind of put it on hold because much of the policy conversation has occurred. So I, I think that, that's sort of where we sit right now. We think that the absolute priority to kind of move forward is the four-year review and kind of some of the other key state legislation pieces, and that'll be referenced in the manager's budget addendum that, that Jim and others have already mentioned. It's sort of in that list of prioritization on how we think about those things.
So to restate it another way, Chris, are you recommending that the CEQA study of the Coyote Valley be, that portion of the Coyote Corridor be put on hold?
Correct.
And that it, and I'm okay with that. What I'm not okay with it is have it in indefinite hold. So I want to be able to, for as long as I'm around, and Councilmember Campos and I have listened to the property owners down there, met with them just recently, that, and we've committed to them, that we will continue to bring this up. So can you at least commit that through the citywide report that you give to CED, I think semi-annually, that you include an update? I know we're not going to have an update in the next, it's going to say we're not doing anything with it, but next year, can we see an update of the plan at that time?
Yeah.
So we don't lose track of it?
Yeah, I think, I think the other thing to sort of remember as well is that, you know, in all of the work we're doing around our internal operational improvements within PBCE, we have created a citywide dashboard that has the backlog of projects and the current staffing capacity available to align with those projects. It's not being removed from that list, it will be sort of front and center in that discussion. So we are, it will be sort of maintained as sort of, it's in the backlog, it's something that we need to get to.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. That's it for me, Mayor.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Let's go to Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, again, for a great presentation. I, I want to continue the conversation that I started in, in the previous item and dive deeper into the pipeline of the people who we know are becoming homeless in the city of San Jose. So we know that a third of the people who are experiencing homelessness on our streets have been involved with the foster care system. We know that as you age out of the foster care system, you lose access to resources such as housing stability, such as a, a family to be a part of. And while there has been progress in trying to bolster the understanding and investment into services and supportive programs for this population, there can always be more that can be done to ensure that, that this population that we know is experiencing high rates of homelessness has what they need to, to be parts of our community that benefit themselves and benefit others. So I'm curious, you know, when we're talking about families who are going into shelters, what, what age are we defining children in these family shelters?
So thank you, Councilmember Eric Solivan, Housing Director. So in terms of age for family shelters, as an example, at Evans Lane, that age spans from just birth, so under 18 for the most part. And as we're looking at the execution of our motel strategy, potentially targeting one of the motels for families, we'll be looking at a particular service population of women with children who are coming from the waterways, and that age expansion as well goes from, you know, zero to 18.
Thank you. So zero to 18, and we know that the brain is still developing until 25 years of age. So folks who find themselves in this predicament, they are 18 and no longer qualify to stay in a family shelter, what choices do they have? Where can they land?
So traditionally for youth who are 18 to 25, who typically fall into the category of youth aging out of foster care, there are two existing programs that provide services to them. One is through the Housing Authority's Family Unification Program. The other is through nonprofit service providers. There's two that come to mind really quickly who particularly target that population through coordination with the Housing Authority through the voucher program. That is currently a gap in service for that population that the city directly serves, but we're exploring opportunities to find ways in which to fund projects that target that population and/or provide shelter opportunities for that population as well.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that response. You know, I shared in yesterday's council meeting that we know we have over 2,000 youth in the city of San Jose who through McKinney Vento data tells us are experiencing homelessness in our city. When you become dual involved with the justice system or with the foster care system, it, it becomes more pervasive, the link to homelessness, especially as, as you age and, and become that chronically homeless population that we talk about being program resistant to the type of services and supportive programming that we're working in partnership with our county to develop and build space and capacity for in our city and our region. Some of the logistical problems that I have heard that add to, you know, this gap in service, and if you can help clarify this for us, when you have, you know, you're, you're talking about two spaces and a growing number of youth who need access to spaces, realistically, if they do not have access to adequate shelter or even better housing opportunities, the opportunities that they have to choose from are being in shelters that are prioritized for adults, older adults. Sometimes there are very real questions and decisions that have to be made at these shelters, right? If there is an adult who cannot, for legal reasons, be around children, how do we make sure that we are providing safe environments for both of these populations who need access to housing and shelter? So it's difficult to create an environment that allows for a hybrid audience. And what I'm hearing is that we need to be considering the design of sites, we need to be ensuring that we have operators who understand both the physical space and the programming needs to work with youth who are aging out of foster care and still need a place to land that is going to be safe for them, not just while they're transitioning out of foster care, but as they are figuring out for themselves how to be a resilient member of the community, again, to themselves and, and to others. And so I think that it's something to be aware of, that, that we have a gap in this clear service need. And it's again, why I talk about the importance of prevention dollars and the need to look at these populations who have a very clear link to our growing homelessness population and the very real opportunity that we have to stop that flow into homelessness with the decisions that we have to make before us. And so I greatly appreciate that. I'm going to see if I have room for one more question here. I would say that maybe just to wrap up my comments, we know that right now, we're talking about housing, we're talking about our workforce, we're talking about how to grow the economy. And in the previous presentation, we, we ended on the note that we have a need for a robust workforce in our city to help us meet our current and long-term goals. This is an opportunity for us to make sure that all of our children, especially our children who have grown in our city in a very precarious situation and circumstance, still see the light at the end of the tunnel for what they can accomplish and what they can achieve by remaining in our city and not moving out to places that may be more affordable out of state, out of the region, right? We want to keep them here, but in order to keep them here, we need to demonstrate that, that we value them, we need to build spaces for them. And to build spaces, we need to invest with our partners in the private and the public sector. And so I think that, that, that is my line of questioning, and, and I hope it, it speaks to the value of what it means to invest early and, you know, remain dedicated and focused to the long-term outcomes of investing early because there is a very real reward when we can create and build spaces for the future, for the long-term. It sets up, up for success now and, you know, not just years, but decades and generations down the road to a more successful, resilient city that understands that we, we have power to, you know, change the flow, and it's by balancing how we're responding to the current state of homelessness crisis, but also how we're trying to stop, you know, being a city that is pushing more and more people into the state of homelessness. So I, I thank you because this is a difficult task, these are difficult questions, and the challenge is up to us as a council to determine how we move forward and, and to really understand the scope of what it is we're trying to address and how we can, you know, move forward with a balanced budget that isn't just balancing numbers on a sheet, but also ensuring that we are moving forward with our values. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Let me turn now to Councilmember Dwan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to Eric, Chris Burton, Matt Lesch and Rosalyn for putting together the presentation. In your economic development plan, do you have any plan to remediate the Singleton site, which is 92 acres? So there we can build housing, retail, entertainment would, would equate to jobs and economic driver for District 7. And according to state laws, I believe that the surplus land, in order to get housing in there, has got to be 900-plus units, which Councilmember Campos stated regarding the, the needed housing. But in the meantime, we can still use it as a pre-engineer modular shelter to get or un-shelter off the street until we build those housing and the entertainments and creating an, an economic driver. But what I'm not okay is, is even the thought process of thinking, turning that surplus land into a flea market, which is, doesn't really truly help our housing needs, nor is a true economic driver. Can you give me some indication on what your thought process on the economic plan for that particular site?
I'm happy to start, and then I'll ask Deputy City Manager Rosalyn Huey to jump in. So there's nothing in the core services or programs at a high level that directly addresses Bariessa specifically. It is coming to council, I believe, next week as a follow-up from the committee. That site has considerable challenges, whether it's for a future commercial use or future residential use or even a future temporary use, given the limitations. So I'll ask Rosalyn to speak to that.
Thanks, Lee. Yes, Councilmembers, so in March, staff provided a status update on the Bariessa flea market work that we've been engaged in actually for a couple of years now. Back in 2021, when the City Council approved rezoning for the site, there were specific measures included in that approval, including direction to conduct an alternative site analysis for a potential location to relocate the flea market. We have that report, we shared it with the CED in March, and we'll be coming to City Council this Tuesday to give you more information. But in summary, we looked at eight different sites throughout the city. There was an emphasis, obviously, on looking at city-owned sites. The Singleton landfill, former Singleton landfill site was one studied and actually rose to the top of potential of moving forward. Obviously, there are a lot of constraints on that site, given it was a former landfill. We are, we do have to deal with the Surplus Land Act. We have been in communications with the State Department of Housing and Community Development on potential exemptions to allow the flea market use. Unfortunately, they declined our request for that. So at this point, staff for, is not making a specific recommendation on alternative site, but we will be sharing that information at council on Tuesday. will be sharing that information at council on Tuesday.
Thank you. And I believe that sooner or later, we're going to have to remediate that area. And the sooner we do it, the less cost we can move forward toward the future for housing, entertainment, and retail and jobs. Thank you so much.
Thanks, council member. Let me turn now to Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quick, I know that we're running out of time here. I wanted to turn back the clock a little bit to our conversation in regards to street vendors. I know that we just enacted a very strong regulation on street vendors and unpermitted vending. I wanted to ask, outside of enforcement, what are we doing within this budget to help our street vendors? I know that there's various different organizations like Prosperity Labs who are going out there to work with them, to make sure that they're getting their permits, to make sure that they're working with property owners, to make sure they have permission to be on the sites in which they are at. You know, this isn't something that's going to go away, and I don't think it's something that we could simply enforce ourselves out of. So I wanted to ask, what are we doing to make sure that just as much as we invest in enforcement, we're actually investing in guiding these street vendors to, you know, get to a place where their business can be, you know, right by the government and who knows, maybe go to a brick and mortar?
Nothing specifically in this year's budget that's new, other than the $100,000 that Jim mentioned. However, part of our regular work in Office of Economic Development or elsewhere in the city is continuing to collaborate with counties' public health, who have a tremendous amount of tools and resources available, and actually working with them around that program and a host of others to try and save funding that comes from the federal government directly to public health around a lot of these communication, marketing, and education programs. So that'll work, that's work that will continue to happen, but it remains unclear what will be available from the county, given their budget situation as well.
I had to take an office-related call. Can you, Jim, could you speak to that $100,000? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, so that is the ongoing allocation of $100,000 in, we have that in the citywide budget there. That is, but to continue, primarily the enforcement work that was talked about.
Okay. I just, you know, I'll just repeat, I don't, enforcement, of course, is important. We need to make sure that our major, you know, arenas have order, and I know that there has been safety concerns. And, you know, I just think that the city also needs to make sure we're investing in those street vendors, whether it's just outreach to help them get their permits or various things, because they're going to continue to operate, you know, in the shadows unless we bring them out of the shadows. And, okay, we enforce one person, well, there's another street vendor coming, and they're going to come to that site again if nobody's out there to educate them, to gather them, to organize them, to make sure they know what their rights are and they know what they can and cannot do. I'm going to try to give, you know, we don't have much discretionary dollars this year, it's like $100,000, so I'm going to try to give some money to Prosperity Labs, but really, there needs to be, this is a citywide interest, you know, it's not just an Eastside thing, and I'm hoping in future budgets, we can make that commitment so that it's not just enforcement, but also elevating their businesses as well. Thank you.
Thanks, council member. Let me go to Councilmember Casey.
My thanks, staff, for the presentation. This is for Eric. As we consider down the line what we do with Measure E funds and the idea that I think most of us here are in line with contributing those funds to interim housing, the revenue bond tool that we're considering, just to offer some scope and scale of what that potentially could mean for us in real dollars, sort of offset the funds that we're allocating to interim housing potentially, just providing that context, I think would be helpful if you could speak to it.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Casey. So in looking at the revenue bond, we get under our existing loan portfolio, which includes the collapsed amount of loans from the original RDA days. That total portfolio is just over $700 million. And from that, there are about roughly eight, 108 to 115 projects that pay into that fund on an active basis, going back to early 2000s. And so as we look at that loan receipts going into the department, which then are just collected in a reserve account, because it comes in sort of drips and drabs throughout the year, in smaller amounts as we're receiving residual payments from the operating waterfalls from deals of priorly constructed and financed by the city. We're going through the fund cleanup for that site and then looking at how best we can potentially monetize that consistency of the receipts over the last five to 10 years, and then working with the Department of Finance, looking at how we can then monetize on that set. And based on the current projections and sizing of those receipts and where the bond markets sort of are today, that can be upwards of somewhere in the ballpark around $75 million, maybe a bit higher, depending on ultimately where bond markets land when we're ready to go to issuance.
Thank you. So basically, more than offset what we're considering in terms of the Measure E funds for interim housing. And I think in terms of our values, it's an opportunity for us to do both, it's the best of both worlds, and our constituents, I think, see the crisis for what it is, and it's important for us, I think, to address this crisis as the quickest way possible. And I think our Measure E funds should go to interim housing. And it doesn't mean we're not going to pursue affordable housing options, we can have the best of both worlds. So I just think in terms of context, as we consider the vote down the line, it's important to understand that it's not an either-or proposition. The city is still considering other opportunities and ways to provide affordable housing, so just food for thought.
Thanks, council member. Let me turn back to Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. I will just be very quick with these questions, because as we're talking about Measure E, I just had a couple of quick questions that came up for me that I think would be helpful, right? As Councilmember Casey said, we're looking at the big picture here. So we know that right now, we're looking at the offset, we're looking at the trade-off of Measure E funds to support the cost of operating the build-out of interim housing facilities. Can you please remind us, what is that cost that we are anticipating for the operation and build-out of EIH in 2526?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I'm just kind of referring back to the attachment C to the forecast, which has the assumptions for 2526 and future years for interim housing. And so as we think about it in terms of the whole portfolio build-out, both the construction and operations, and so for 2526, the estimated total all-in for construction operation for interim housing was around $128 million, which would bump down to about $87 million in '26, '27, and then increase roughly to about $100 million over the remainder of the five-year forecast. And so our projections on the general fund to contribute to that was $25 million in '25, '26, and then increased to $66 million in '26, '27, and then increased to about $90 million at the fifth year of the five-year forecast.
Thank you for that forecast. You saved me a follow-up question. So looking towards the future, at what point do we get to a place where Measure E is not enough to pay for 100% of the ongoing operational costs of emergency interim housing?
Yeah, we are, that's where we're at now, is, yeah.
And so if we know that 100% of Measure E is not enough to pay for the ongoing operational costs of our EIH pipeline, where does that lead us? What are the options that we have as a city to meet those costs?
And so Eric can jump in here, but our approach has been, since we started this process back in, I think, '21, '22, where we had the funding strategy, is that we would be looking, where are all the external sources of funding that we can use to construct and operate the interim housing facilities? And that's what gets the first call. So think of HAP, think of other previous allocations from home, we used American Rescue Plan funding, we used sort of a variety of sources to help with that work. And then to the extent that external sources were not going to be enough, that we would be ramping up general fund support over a multi-year basis. And so we're just part of that process. So the process that we're on now is a process that we had anticipated several years back. So as the amount of external funding that we can count on, now that external funding is going to fluctuate on a year-to-year basis, depending on what actually goes in, so we're only going to forecast what we know we're going to get, and we expect probably to get a little bit more on the external funding side, but we have to forecast sort of what we think could happen if that additional money doesn't come through. So that's been our strategy, has been to sort of ramp up that general fund contribution as the external funding is not available to support that work. So that's, this is, you know, year probably four of a multi-year process.
And I'll just add to some strategy. Going back to our February study session, is we're looking at some additional exterior sources and partnerships, given the sort of variety of shelter options we have within the system, like the motels strategy, similar to how we discussed a few weeks ago, we're looking at partnerships with the housing authority to expand and replicate models like the Pacific Motor Inn. We're looking at ways in which we can build out our potential billings back to Medicaid as an additional exterior source of funding to support the services as well. Those are just two, and the examples that we're looking at, ways to better fund and situate the shelter system in a way that we can sustain its continuing operations, acknowledging that, as we had discussed during the study session back in February, you know, there's a peak amount of growth that we can have, and at some point, we have to ensure there's continuing throughput from the shelter system into the housing system in order to maintain the services across that entire continuum.
Thank you both for your answer. I agree that that is a wonderful strategy for our city to be employing. It's one that I'm proud of, that we are working cross-government collaboration with the city, with the county, with the state. But as we know, HAP funding is not guaranteed year after year, right? We're fighting for it in the state budget, as we have had to for the past couple of years. And so, you know, really where that leaves us is relying on our general fund to supplement the dollars that we cannot bring in through other partners. And so, again, you know, agreeing with Councilmember Casey that we do have an urgent need to address the crisis before us, and we are a city that provides core services to our residents, and I think that that is also something for us to be critically aware of as we're building out our portfolio of emergency interim housing without a dedicated revenue source to make sure that long-term, we are planning fiscally, responsibly, to ensure that we can do both, right? That we can address our housing and homelessness crisis without affecting the ability for our city staff to provide the core services that our residents not just depend on, but deserve. So thank you again for those last questions.
Thanks, council member. Look, I think it's a fair, it's a fair call-out. I do want to remind folks, Measure E is a general fund source. It happens to have been passed by going to the voters and saying we were going to use it to address homelessness. And that was the entire ad campaign that was included in the text of the measure, along with affordable housing, as a strategy for addressing homelessness. I think we are where we are over a few years of council policy direction, based on the fundamental premise that unanimously, the council has agreed, and I think, I suspect we still unanimously agree, that it is unacceptable and unsustainable to leave thousands of people in unsheltered conditions on our streets for years on end, waiting for housing. And what I think we are trying to grapple with is, how do we meet our moral obligation to get people connected to safe environments with sanitation, with basic services, access to meals, bathrooms, the most basic needs that human beings have? Also grapple with the fact that having thousands of people in unsafe, unsanitary, unmanaged tent encampments across the city is actually undermining our tax base. We're seeing employers leave our city because of it. It is causing incredible damage to the local economy, the environment, and we are accumulating costs by failing to get folks into a managed space with at least sanitation, security, some very basic human needs. I think there's an ethical or moral imperative here. I think there's also a very practical one, from an economic, environmental, and fiscal perspective. I actually think our tax base erodes when we don't find ways to get ahead of this. I will say, though, to the point a couple of colleagues have raised today, once again, in our ongoing discussion of this, we do not have the resources to do this in any ideal way. The scalability here is a major problem. Even with faster, cheaper solutions that this city has pioneered and really led the way in over the last four, five years, really since the start of the pandemic, even that, there are limits to the scalability. 5,000 people out there, we don't have 5,000 beds, even with the 1,400 we're adding this year. So this is going to be an ongoing issue we have to grapple with. That being said, if we all continue to agree as a body that our number-one challenge is unsheltered homelessness, is our community's number-one concern, and we have a moral and practical imperative to do something about it now, in the short run, not leave people in chronic homelessness for years on end, hoping and often dying on our streets, we are going to need to focus on proposals for real solutions, people's proposals. I don't think I have a monopoly on the truth here, monopoly on the solutions, I think everybody's got ideas, but we're going to need to bring forward and answer to the question of what we do about the 5,000 people living in tents on our streets. So I just would encourage colleagues to bring forward the proposal for how we meet the need of the 5,000 people suffering on our streets today, because if anything, what we're doing today is not fast and cheap enough, not scalable enough. We may need to have a longer conversation about congregate, about large, safe sleeping, about a whole other ballgame here, because we're not even near meeting the need of the immense human suffering on our streets today. Okay, I have a few questions, too, as we wrap here, and I'm going to try to be real quick, because I want to get out of here at noon. So we are, Development Services is a big part of this CSA, it's a $90 million enterprise. Our goal is one unified customer experience. We can build that missing middle housing that we can't publicly subsidize, but we desperately need and has all that downstream effect on prices. We have new performance goals, including a 100% on-time rate for 30-day planning reviews. We should have, in my view, performance goals for building and public works that we can meet at 100% of the time. I think we also need to include, if we don't already have it, I did not see a metric in place for fire review timelines. And I think we need, it's not enough for one piece of the system to be hitting the metrics. We have five or six different departments that make up Development Services. Chris, but everybody else here, how do we ensure everybody is meeting aggressive timelines for reviews and that we are combining and parallelizing these rather than having to be sequential?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I think it's a really good question and one that we take on as a team across all of Development Services on a pretty regular basis. So at the director level, we're meeting quarterly to ensure that we're aligned across our processes, across all of Development Services. And as we're kind of reinstituting and kind of reformatting the development facilitation function within PBCE, we're kind of using that to help us kind of really think about, you know, the process and the sort of full continuum of development throughout the various parts of the city process. So it's definitely something that's top of mind. You know, as we look across all of the performance metrics, I think the part that's in there that doesn't always get reflected well is the way that we're prioritizing within there. So I know certainly around the development project on-time reviews for construction process metric that we often talk about, it parallels the metric that we see in the focus areas around residential development, and there's some challenges in the way that those metrics are put together. For a start, this is looking at project, not number of units. There's a lot of prioritization that's going on around those projects that are significantly adding housing. So, you know, if you look over the past year, we've certainly prioritized all the work around the affordable housing projects because of their need to move quickly throughout process so we can ensure that they're making their funding timelines. That may have a downstream impact on other projects. That will likely be the individual ADU or the single-family project, which, again, we take seriously and we, you know, absolutely believe in our commitment to customer service across all of our customers, but with the kind of limited availability of staff and resource, that's where you're seeing some of those differentiations in the numbers, is we're really kind of focused on the things that are making the biggest difference.
So you're prioritizing. So is the biggest barrier that we are fee-funded and therefore understaffed to meet aggressive timelines for all projects? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
To some extent, right? I mean, I think the, in theory, right, a fee-funded system should level itself to the expectation on demand. So I think right now, we're in a down market. That puts pressure on our ability to, you know, certainly grow our operations in a way that would sort of provide better service. But historically, yes, we've been a But historically, yes, we've been at kind of lean levels. It's not just about kind of availability positions, it's also really hard to hire into some of these positions. So when you look at some of the vacancy rates, especially at the engineer class for plan review across both public works and fire and building, that's an area that in the past, we've had challenges around. So we've thought creatively and strategically on how we continue to create pipeline for those positions, so that when we do have the opportunity to add, we can do so quickly. One of the biggest things I'm talking to my staff about now is, you know, we have the potential for a significant and sudden increase in demand, right? And so are we ready for it, so we can adjust when that turns on?
I'm glad you're anticipating. Got like 90 seconds left here. I did want to get in one last question on Sequo streamlining and really want to push us, I mean, I'll say it, I'll say it provocatively, and Nora will probably throw something at me, but if we aren't occasionally getting sued for Sequo review, then we're not being aggressive enough. And I, no, but seriously, I want to know, and I, look, we're all advocating for changes at the state level. I'm up there all the time, you know, talking till I'm blue in the face about Sequo reform. We have, the truth is, in terms of how we do the review locally, a lot is within our hands, and I want to know if we are pushing ourselves out of our comfort zone on how we do, how we implement Sequa locally to get the projects we want approved faster.
Yeah, so I'll let Nora throw things at you as appropriate, but, I mean, we do get sued, but it's not even just about the lawsuit. I will tell you that a lot of the work is the sort of, before we even get to that point. So, I mean, a great example of what's going on with this is the 15 Builders Remedy projects we have right now. Those projects aren't, it's not applicant talking to our project manager, it's attorney talking to attorney with the anticipation of future lawsuit around these issues. And that's often what we see around Sequo as it comes to the legal challenges. So I know there's a lot of concern and criticism that potentially we're too conservative in our approach. I think that's driven on both sides by the engagement of attorneys, by, you know, developers' attorneys as well as our own, as well as other stakeholders in the community.
Yeah, I think it's also just slow, I think it's the timeline for the analysis and the reports, and I would push us to figure out how to streamline that, particularly in places like downtown and not taking years to be in a position to do that. I think we're going to need to standardize and simplify how we're doing the reviews, how we're writing the reports, and get through that process faster, even if it slightly marginally increases risk, because we may get sued, and if they're going to sue, they're going to sue. All right, I apologize. We are, we're at time, a lot of great questions today, we will be back tomorrow, I believe. Oh, I'm sorry, Tony, do we have public comment at this point? We do not, I figured that was the case. All right, thank you all, we're adjourned.